Good afternoon and welcome to the work session, the special session on this Tuesday, May 21st, 2024. In the absence of the mayor, I'm calling the meeting to order and I will also entertain a motion to appoint a chair.
Madam Clerk, I hereby move that Councilwoman Shelley McIntyre be the acting chairwoman for the purposes of this work session and special session.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion carried unanimously. Thank you. Okay, first up, we have a proclamation for Older Americans Month. And it is Sandy Wood is the chief operating officer to be accepting the proclamation. Hi Sandy, how are you? Good. All right, I'm gonna have a nice, long proclamation. So you can rest like this. Whereas, the month of May is designated Older Americans Month by the U.S. Department of Health and Human Services, and whereas the theme for Older Americans Month 2024 is Powered by Connection, which focuses on the profound impact that meaningful connections have on the well-being and health of older adults. And whereas, the city of Hagerstown is committed to engagement supporting older adults, their families and caregivers, and acknowledges the importance of taking part in activities that promote physical, mental, and emotional well-being no matter your age. And whereas, the city of Hagerstown can enrich the lives of individuals at every age by promoting home and community-based services that support independent living, involving older adults in community planning events and other activities, and providing opportunities for older adults to work, volunteer, learn, lead, and mentor. Now therefore, I, Shelley McIntyre, on behalf of Keesh Martinez, Mayor of the City of Hagerstown, hereby proclaim the month of May 2024 as Older Americans Month, and encourage our citizens to take time during this month to recognize older adults and the people who serve them as vital parts of our community. You're welcome. Do you want to say a couple of words about the organization?
I just want to say thank you to the city of Hagerstown for supporting the Washington County Council on Aging. Without support from our organizations, without support from state, local, or federal government, we couldn't have been able to.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Here it comes.
Okay, and good smiles, one, two, three, and one more for safety, one, two, three.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, next up, we have the Soto Arts presentation, Eliza Lathrop, the Director of Soto Arts. Hi, Eliza.
Hi. Do you need my address?
I'm sorry?
Okay.
Your address?
No. Nope. So I'm Eliza Lathrop. I'd like to thank you all for allowing us to present to you today. Sorry, let me get in front of the mic. I'll just start over. I'd like to thank you all for allowing us to present to you today. And I also like to thank Brittany Arizmendi for offering her support in this process. I'm a local artist. I've lived in Hagerstown for most of my life. I have my Bachelor of Fine Arts from Shepherd University, and I also studied at HCC prior to that. I've been on the Public Arts Commission for the last four years, and about a year and a half ago, I started Soto Arts with Cherie Dinkins. And we're here today to make Soto Arts known as an organization, and to ask for your guidance and support in moving forward and with our growing community. So, I'll just start here. Soto stands for South of Downtown. We were established as a 501(c)(3) last year, and we currently function out of Bloom's Alley. And our board members, some of our board members are here today. Alisa Campbell is here, Cherie Dinkin is our founder. We also have our coordinator Caleb Arant here as well. And then, a lot of people in the crowd are just members who wanted to come and show their support of what we're doing. So, our mission with Soto Arts is to bridge the gap for younger artists of the community who may have lost connection and resources after going through college or high school, and are in a stage, an in-between stage, after graduation and having an established career. And again, I've lived Hagerstown for a long time, and yet, there's really nothing for people my age group in town. We have two great art spaces in town, the Washington County Arts Council and the Museum of Fine Arts, but they're really geared towards an older crowd or high schoolers. So that middle group between 18 and 30 is kind of left out often. And that group, myself included, are really desperate for jobs and art opportunities. So, it's not merely my own personal struggle, but also a common point of frustration among our peers and those involved with Soto. We're constantly talking about the need to, you know, leave the city or go to a different state just to find other opportunities and find jobs related to the arts. So, what we're offering is that if we don't provide a space now or soon, that group of people will have to leave in order to find those opportunities. And that cuts out your group of people who are going to take on the mantle of leadership roles in town in the future. So our goal is to build a maker space specifically for working young adults. And to touch on our goals, we'd like to engage and support artists, but we also need to provide a maker space. Hagerstown is lacking a space for artists to work and create in. We only have gallery space, and artists so much more than just exhibition. We need a functional space, and something like that is very pivotal to aspects, to other art, successful art centers around. If you look at Frederick, if you look at Hyattsville, DC, Pittsburgh, all these cities have really great art infrastructure that really taps into all aspects of creation, the beginning stages, the discussion of art, and then the display. And I'll have examples of those in later slides. We're passionate about developing and educating professional practices within artists to become self-sustaining, whether it's resume building or website design, filing taxes, applying for grants. All of these are necessary tools that a lot of people are not taught and have to learn on their own, or are just generally too afraid to do on their own. And ultimately, we want to impact the local art scene by offering something fresh and new. So our outreach, we'd like to provide opportunities for other people to engage. So residency programs are a really great resource for artists to develop. North Mountain Residency, for example, is in West Virginia. It was shut down a couple of years ago, but it had a good run, and they had people joining locally, nationally, internationally. He actually had folks coming from China just to experience West Virginia. And so, an artist residency is a really great program for artists to just dedicate time and have the space to work on their craft and create new connections. Engine Room, if you guys remember, was a great example of that desire that people have in town to have a space, to have residencies and studio, but we just need the correct structure to run it well. And then workforce development, having a space like this is going to require jobs. It's going to need people to be coordinators, instructors, all these people who will run this space. And that keeps them here longer, keeps people engaged. And then, having a community studio space, it allows artists to have the tools that they themselves may not be able to afford. And in general, it's a more sustainable practice and use of equipment. So spaces like this can be self-sustaining. For example, I may not be able to afford a really expensive laser cutting machine, but I can afford a membership that would allow me access to the building with the machine. So they can become self-sustaining in that way with like memberships, memberships. And if you have a large group of people, it funds itself. So we currently host two monthly events. We have figure drawing and critiques. Our figure drawing has been running for about a year. We just recently had our largest turnout of about 15 people. We have more involved, but that was a pretty good group for that figure drawing. And it's a really good opportunity for artists to continue practicing a skill that's not offered in town. We don't have, HCC or Barbara Ingham do not offer figure drawing. You'd have to go to Shepherdstown. So it's a really good time for community and connections. And then critiques, these are actually some photos of our events. Critiques are a really good time for socializing. It's a time for people to bring in their artwork to discuss and work through struggles, ask for advice. And it's an element of schooling that a lot of artists miss because we need that dialogue. We need that perspective about our work to see if it's, you know, functioning well, and just to get outside perspective. So it's a really great form of engagement that's outside of just your standard exhibition. And then, future events that we'd like to incorporate include workshop development, professional, excuse me, professional development workshops. That would include, again, that educational element of like teaching people how to sustain themselves, printmaking, papermaking, zine workshops, art trade and barter events, film screenings. It's just a variety of ideas that we want to incorporate people in. And then having these smaller opportunities allows people to stay connected longer. For example, we had recently gone to Pyramid Atlantic in Hyattsville, and we spoke with some resident artists there, and they all said that their current occupation of the space all started from just one workshop and one studio visit. And those, that one thing led them step by step to having two, three, four, 10-year studio rentals in the space. So, it's just really important to have those smaller things to bring people in. And it also is really great for individual development, but also organization stability. Again, studio rentals and workshops fund themselves over time. Additionally, workshops and things like zine making and printmaking, they become easily profitable products for artists to sell, meaning a quicker turnaround. So it's, for instance, easier to sell a $20 print than it is an original painting. So that's another element that'll tie back into the community. If you educate people how to do those things, they can then be involved with things that Brittany are holding, Brittany's holding, like the Hagerfest coming up, elements of like vending and self-promotion. So it's a cyclical system. If you teach people and get them involved, which then funds itself, it then allows the artists to enrich their own practice and engage back with the community. Sorry, I should have scrolled through a little bit faster. But this is a list of some of our estimated needs. In order to fulfill all these ideas, we do need funding. We're not expecting anything today, but we wanted to show you what we have and what we're working towards to ask for your help. So currently, we don't have very many financial obligations, but in order to progress, we will be needing funding and be applying for things in a variety of ways. Our main focus is securing a location. Again, we currently run out of Bloom's Alley, but that's not our space. We ideally would like to look into 216 South Locust, which is just the other side of Bloom's Alley, which is, again, in the A&E district, so it's all-inclusive. But we're open to anything. It's a rough estimate of what we're looking for. The middle section is about $20,000. That would help us add events, afford equipment, things like easels, stools, charcoal paper, things that the community can use, and then adding programming, and then also paying for labor, so models, coordinators, instructors. And then at the bottom, it moves into larger chunks, you know, renting or buying a building, renovations, HVAC, all those things that are incorporated with that. This next chart is a breakdown of each event cost. Again, we don't have very many expenses currently, but this shows an ideal version of what it would be to run each event. So that includes the one-time purchase of equipment. It also has the recurring costs, how to break even with how many people would be in. And then, this is a slide of our examples, the places that we really want to emulate, specifically the top two, Red Dirt Studios and Pyramid Atlantic. They have amazing art infrastructure that are artist-focused spaces. They have huge community impact, so much so that Pyramid Atlantic was actually founded in 1981, but a number of years ago, after they, you know, gathered a huge following and moved to locations a few times. The current building that they're in right now, the city gave to them because they wanted that art space there. They really saw the value of what they were doing. So basically, we're trying to bring what they have in these larger cities here to Hagerstown. And then to summarize, we're going to keep pushing forward. We really want your support and your guidance in doing this. I'm just one person, but we are building a big community, and we're looking forward to what the city is doing. All the change that's happening with the stadium, Hub City Vinyl's new venue, there's just, and all the things that Brittany is doing, there's just so much change. And I really feel that Hagerstown is at the precipice of amazing change, and we want to be part of that by building a maker space. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Eliza. Do you, any of you have any questions at all, comments?
I have a question for you.
Yes.
So, I'm not familiar with a lot of these. I'm familiar with MICA and of course, the Delaplane, things like that. Have you guys had a conversation, I know you said that I think Red Dirt donated them a building at one point, but have you had a conversation with these other organizations to kind of see how they got their upfront, like initial money to buy, the bigger cost items and things like that?
Yes. We have not spoken with the other ones, but we have spoken with Pyramid Atlantic and Red Dirt Studios. And we do have meetings in place to talk to them more in depth about how they started. I'm working closely with some professors from Shepherd, as well as the John Lovitz, who started the North Mountain Residency. So we're gathering our resources of really influential people who can tell us how to get this started.
Awesome. Great. Thank you.
Yeah, no problem. Any other questions?
Just referring back to your conversation about the needs.
Yes.
So, your operational expenses, are those annual expenses?
So, yes, we're looking at, let me go back to that slide.
The numbers that you provided here, annual?
Yes.
Figures?
So, we're looking at just like a one-year thing, just to try to move forward in this next year. We're also trying to figure out how to like make it to a point where we can break even. And then, we're also looking at getting like schematic drawings and stuff for the 216 building, and that will be included in that as well.
And, yeah, on 216 South Locust, what is the size of that space that you're looking to rent?
I don't have the square footage off the top of my head. I'm sorry. It's 3,000 square feet.
And the rent you've listed, is that?
That's the current listing, yeah.
Is that the second half of this year? I mean, what?
Oh, I'm sorry. So the 4,000 is the current listing for both buildings, Bloom's Alley and 216.
Oh, that would be the total.
And that would be the full year.
So you would anticipate maintaining your current space and adding the additional space? Is that what you're saying?
Yes. The vision is to incorporate both buildings, because the flow of the building is really ideal for this kind of space. You'd have the more public side, which is like gallery, workshops, things like that. And then the other side is the more industrial side. It's pretty great. It has a good area for like a wood shop, and then areas of printmaking, papermaking, sculpture, 3D modeling, computer labs, things like that.
Okay.
Any other questions?
So, I mean, I pulled up the building, just to familiarize myself. It's odd, you know, it's odd because you pass it all the time. You kind of wonder like what's going on inside there.
Yeah.
A couple of comments, though. The first is, it sounds a bit like the presentation that was provided by Roger Fairborn and the folks that came in, I don't know, a year and a half ago, about the interest they have in expanding Museum of Fine Arts offerings into, I think it's an old bottling place there at the Museum of Fine Arts. And so, I'm just really curious, the idea that they have, being an idea, and what you're doing already, you know what I mean, like putting that idea into effect. And so, I would hope at some point, between the various art interests in the community, that there would be some conversation among the parties in a collaborative fashion, so you could say like, this is what we're already doing here, and you know, how it could expand into that, because I feel like their interest is in the school wage offering, which is, in my opinion, a bit more expansive than what PISFA does. But then, you know, could move into that professional side. And I say that, and I'd say the same thing that I said to Roger Fairborn when he was here at that meeting, you know, I have children, and they're not really into sports, and we spend all kinds of money on sports advancement for our youth, you know, more than we care to count at times. But not all kids are into that stuff. And so, I think that this is a cool idea, because I think, you know, I look at my daughter, who's in 11th grade, and she's an amazing artist. But we have talks weekly of, you know, okay, what do you want to do with that after?
Exactly.
School. And as a kid growing up, playing pretty high-level sports myself, that conversation never really happened, because you always knew what the next step was. For your hands-on vocations, like plumbing and electrical and those things, you sort of already know what that next step is. And I think in the arts, we don't give it enough attention at that sort of beginner level, out of school and into the profession, of, okay, well, what do you do with that next step? And so I think that, you know, if we can invest that level of energy and interest in the sports that we do, and in those very, you know, vocational, hands-on things that we do, then I like this idea as well. The two critical comments that I would make, I think, one is, and the mayor's not here, so I'm just going to say it on her behalf, she loves spoken words art, and so, being able to incorporate that into a space like this, in any type of art venue, I think is important to her and important to folks like me that appreciate that avenue of art. And the second is, I like the fact that it's not exactly where everything else is slated to be, that there is some connectivity between, you know, and I don't want to be selfish when I say this, but, you know, when we were debating the location of the new baseball stadium, I know people aren't supposed to call it that, but that's what it is, and the location of the indoor turf complex, I constantly said, these places are only like two blocks apart. I mean, if you look at a map, they're literally two blocks apart, and this type of venue space is right in between them. And so I think whether it's Hospital Hill, which I don't know if that's what people refer to it as, in this space, but there is the ability to link those spaces. And so I like the fact that you've, you know, looked at this and said, okay, you know, where else are these types of things?
Yeah, absolutely.
Capable of going, and we're not focused on just that two blocks that we constantly have looked at for the last ten years.
But it's still close enough that you can look to it.
It is. It's absolutely. And so, you know, that's why I like that.
Thank you.
Eliza, do you have a social media presence?
Yes, we do. We do have Instagram, Facebook. You can find all our current events and uploads on there. We also have a website, and at the end, you have a GoFundMe. So if anybody individually wants to add to our fund, you can go directly there.
Wonderful. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
Yes.
Thank you.
Next up, we have the Choice Neighborhoods Program update, Sean Griffith with the Hagerstown Housing Authority, Margie Jo, our Community Development Manager, and Rachel Paul, our Planning Outreach Coordinator.
Hi.
So, well, thank you all for the opportunity to come up and update this body and the community about the Choice Neighborhoods Initiative. We're several months into the process now, and we've really been encouraged by the feedback that we've gotten so far from our citizens and from our community partners. Where's our slideshow?
She took her, I, where is it?
She might have left.
Oh, she did the whole.
Thank you for your contribution.
Yeah, I know. Help fund the Soto Arts.
Going great. Any questions?
It's a one-on-one ball.
Oh, there we go. Okay. Thank you.
All right.
So we just swiped.
Yep.
Not a party till you have story. So here's a brief summary of what we'll be sharing today. Sean, Rachel, and I will be tag teaming with our updates on the slides, and at the end, we'll be happy to answer any questions that you might have about the program.
So, the next few slides might be a little repetitive from the first time we met, but I thought it was kind of important, or we thought it was important, that we kind of gave a little overview of why we're here today. Choice Neighborhood is a HUD competitive grant. Really what it looks to do is revitalize parts of communities. What those parts of the communities are, the community itself decides that. But really, what it looks to do is transform lower-income communities that are distressed and bring them up to current standards within the community. So that's where we are today as far as choice. But the reason we decided to apply for this was because we saw a lot of areas of the community, primarily the housing authority communities on the north end, Parks, Towns, Douglas Court. And in looking at that, we realized that there are areas around that that really could use some work as well. So that's why we're here today and discussing choice.
So Choice Neighborhoods focuses on three main goals. The first one is
The first one is housing and the replacement of distressed housing with quality mixed income housing that meets the needs of the neighborhood. The second one is people. Um, it focuses on improving outcomes of households related to employment, income, health and children education. And then the neighborhood. It's, um, centers on creating conditions necessary for revitalization.
So there are two types of grants under the Choice umbrella, the planning grant and the implementation grant. So what we're administering now is the planning grant and that is what's giving us the time and funding to put together a revitalization plan for the neighborhood, uh, based on input from its residents and business owners. So moving forward, we'll have an opportunity to apply for the implementation grant, which if awarded, will provide funding to put our transformation plan in place. I do want to emphasize that the transformation plan once developed, that's going to be our vision for the Choice Neighborhood. And regardless of any grant funding, that's what we will be working towards.
So what one of the things we wanted to point out is, um, HOPE SIX, for those of you that are familiar, uh, was funding that was used or a method that was used to redevelop the West End, known as Gateway Crossing now. Great funding source, great program, but HUD realized over the years that it was really just focused on housing. Uh, they realized there was more to communities than just providing, you know, safe, decent and affordable housing. And they started relooking at the HOPE SIX grant. And it kind of spiraled into what they call now call the Choice Neighborhood Grant. What the Choice Neighborhood Grant does that's different than the HOPE SIX grant is not only looks at, you know, public housing transformation, but it also looks at the community around that public housing community, um, which is kind of what we're looking at here, which is that Choice Neighborhood that's been defined. But it looks at things like the people in the community, uh, surrounding community, um, and the neighborhood itself. Um, things like employment, education, um, all of those kind of things are taken into account now where you didn't have that in the HOPE SIX grant. So not only now is HUD realize, yeah, housing is important, but so are the people that live in those houses, the people that live in the surrounding community and the needs of the community that surrounds that. So that's kind of how HOPE SIX, you know, kind of transformed into the Choice Neighborhood Grant. So where are we in the process currently? Um, last time we met, uh, here was in October of twenty twenty-two. It doesn't feel like it's been that long, but apparently it has been. Uh, during that meeting, it was a work session, um, the housing authority met with, uh, city elected officials and discussed possibilities of partnering on this Choice Neighborhood Grant. Uh, the walk away from that meeting was, yeah, it seemed like a great opportunity and let's look into it, let's move forward. So in March of twenty twenty-three, an RFP was issued, uh, to look for a consultant that would help put together the, uh, application for the grant and also help implement the grant. Uh, around the May timeframe, uh, those, uh, RFP responses were due and we awarded a contract to Wallace Roberts and Todd, also known as WRT. You might hear that throughout the, uh, presentation. Uh, so the application, uh, was put together. Uh, we had about thirty days to do quite a bit of legwork on the back end to get all that information together. Uh, it also entailed a site visit out from WRT. And if you remember a little earlier, I mentioned, we were really looking initially internally at like, uh, Turf Street up to Prospect Street, couple of blocks over as being the choice area. Uh, when they came out on site, kind of looked around, they realized, you know, there's more opportunities here than just that small geographical area. So they recommended we increase the choice footprint, um, all the way from Prospect, uh, down to Frederick Manor and kind of wrap up both sides of the of the community up Cannon, I believe it is, and Prospect on the other side. So those are really the the boundaries that are being focused on, um, as part of this this grant process. Uh, so the application was submitted to HUD, um, in June of twenty twenty-three. And in September of twenty twenty-three, uh, HUD notified us that we were successful and we were awarded the maximum grant amount of five hundred thousand dollars. So that's kind of the backend as to how we got the grant and where we are, you know, today and moving forward.
Can you define the boundary again?
So the boundary is Prospect Street on the north end, over to Prospect, heading south. Goes around the circle, uh, Park Circle, over to Memorial, kind of comes around and picks up Frederick Manor. And then heads back up, I guess that'd be Memorial again, then up to Cannon, connecting back up to Prospect. Um, so the reason we we picked Frederick Manor up in there is because HUD requires, in order for these neighborhood revitalizations to occur, you have to have what they call a target housing site. And a target housing site is a public housing community. So by picking up someone on the northern end and one on the southern end, it kind of helped build that gap to give us more flexibility, um, and increase that map. It also put more public housing units into the mix, which also helps bring in additional funds to the the surrounding communities.
Woo, we got it. Choice is a highly competitive grant. We were one of fourteen communities awarded among huge cities like Orlando, Kansas City and Philadelphia. It is a two-year funding process led by the housing authority and the city. And it brings residents and stakeholders together to develop a united, shared vision for the future.
So our major deliverables, uh, we're currently at the needs assessment stage of the planning process, which involves the resident, neighborhood and business owner surveys. Prior to this, we hosted the HUD team back in February and we'll tell you a little bit more about that in a moment. Our next big milestone will be development of an outline based on results from the surveys and other information that our consulting team has been compiling. And here's a rough timeline of our planning process. Uh, during our last check-in with HUD, we received some very positive feedback, uh, from their team as we are on, well on target or ahead of some of the other, uh, planning grant authorities. So yay again for Hagerstown.
Um, so this is an overview of the team's structure. The lead grantee is the housing authority with the city of Hagerstown as the, um, co-grantee. Our consultant is WRT and we make up the, uh, core team. We also have a steering committee that includes Hagerstown Housing Authority residents. And then we have task forces with ample community partners. Uh, we reached out to community organizations to join our task forces and we've received an overwhelming and amazing response. This first slide shows the housing task force. Um, the co-chair is the Community Action Council and below that you'll see the other, um, organizations that are with us on that. It focuses on discussions of housing sites and mixed income possibilities. Our next slide is our People and Neighborhood Task Force. We ended up combining the two groups because the goals are very similar between people and neighborhood. Um, we have subcommittees of transportation, employment, public safety, health, youth services, early education slash K through twelve and downtown and economic development. And as you've seen, we have a huge amount of support from our community organizations.
And there's more joining every day, it seems like.
Yes. I'm sorry, this formatting got a little messed up there.
So, so back in February, HUD came on site and did a site visit. And it's it's pretty common practice for the choice grant. What they want to do is come out and look at your choice neighborhood, um, as defined by the boundaries, kind of get a feel for what's in there. Uh, they want to take a look at the target housing sites, um, employment opportunities, education. They just really want to take a look at the whole community and get a better grasp of what it entails. The site, uh, visit, um, started with a meeting here in City Hall, which was really city, uh, housing authority staff and our consultant WRT, just for basic introductions. And then there was a tour, uh, of the city. Uh, we came back here afterwards and we had meetings with those three different groups, neighborhood, people and housing, again, neighborhood and people, we combined. We also got to hear from some of those co-chairs in each one of those committees and and kind of hear from them, what they envision, what they're seeing, what they're hearing, um, and their concerns within the community. And, uh, I guess it's a good thing to say, and it's fair to say, that HUD came back and said, we see no problems with what you guys are doing, we're extremely pleased. And they even said it's probably one of the best site visits they've ever been on. They were impressed by downtown Hagerstown and the things they saw. So that was, that was really impressive. And and, uh, the mayor isn't here, but she also said she doesn't recall a time when housing authority staff and the mayor were together in the same meeting. So I don't know what that says about other communities, but, but that was something they hadn't seen before. Um, so they left here, they were happy. And, uh, it's not a slide here, but I just do want to make note, um, shortly after HUD came, we did have a market study done, uh, which is part of this as well. And they also did a site tour. And I do want to say, the city staff did an amazing job actually just touring the city. I really didn't realize how much development effort's going on right now, um, until we did that and really got to see everything that was happening. Uh, they were impressed with that as well. The one-day market study tour ended up being two because they wanted to see more and just keep going. So it was, it was great, so.
Okay, so we are currently in the stage of the needs assessment. Um, the needs assessment was, is comprehensive. Um, it was developed with our task forces. There were many drafts, um, reviews, meetings, edits and updates to get them where they are today. We did focus on accessibility. We have multiple types of surveys. There's paper, there's digital for a resident needs assessment. We make sure there's one-on-one distribution. We created glossaries in case there are any questions. Um, so we wanted to make sure that it was accessible to everybody taking it. Um, and then also, we had some swag made. Um, all of the Hagerstown Housing Authority residents were gifted before their survey with a swag bag. Um, and we also have them in your mailboxes today as well. We're using scots as a demonstration. So we have a brochure in here, um, that answers all your questions about Choice Neighborhoods, um, a sticker sheet, and we have pens, a magnet and cookies. And we're trying to just build awareness, um, excitement and recognition of Hagerstown Choice. Uh, oh, and tote bags. Oh, my gosh, there's more in here. Oh, yes, sorry. A spiral notepad and a Taran Red No. Um, so the only, the assessment for the residents is required, but we wanted to plan to include the voices of everybody in the Choice Neighborhood's boundary. So we made three. Um, the first one is the Target Housing Survey. So this is for the residents of the three HHA sites. It is more comprehensive, it's a little bit longer than the other surveys. Um, it's administered by our community partners. And then we put some stats up there for our responses that we've had so far. We have about twenty-seven percent from Douglas Court, sixty-three percent from Parkside Homes and fifty-eight percent from Frederick Manor. Um, the next survey was the Downtown Business Owner Survey. Um, we presented it at the Main Street Business Owner Meeting and have been doing outreach through posters, flyers, emails and Facebook blasts. Um, this is designed for all of our organizational staff and downtown business owners to talk about the experiences, needs, wants, um, and of of their businesses. So we're informed by that. And then the neighborhood is for residents in and around the Hagerstown boundary. Uh, this one's also quick, just like the business survey. Um, and it also assesses community needs and experiences and wants. And all, both of the business and the neighborhood survey are available online right now. So if you're watching, you can go to the, um, Department of Community and Economic Development Facebook page and we have both of the surveys linked there. Thank you. Yes.
Also too, it was important for us to capture the youth and and what their wants and needs are. And, uh, we're asking them to also fill out the neighborhood survey just so we could hear from them. Uh, we developed the survey so it'd be more for adults and youth as well. And I guess the only ask we have of you all today is if you could help promote those surveys and get the word out so people fill them out. So it's important we get that information back to us.
What is the time frame for these surveys?
Um, we are hoping to have everything wrapped up by the end of May, I believe. Um, but if needed, we will extend the survey time to get some more responses. But I think around the end of May is when we're.
Is there any door-to-door activity, I guess, on the neighborhood survey?
I don't believe there's been.
Not so much. And more through social media outreach and, um, the word-of-mouth emails from and and asking the business owners to promote that as well.
With with this survey, is there something that will, um, check an address to make sure it's within the targeted boundary that you're looking for?
It it does have, uh, it does ask where you live, so you get that information. Obviously, you can fit and not give it a real address.
I just want to make sure you guys get the results from the area you're looking for.
But one of the things that was important, um, that came up, I think during the kickoff meeting, um, was that a lot of the individuals in there, uh, wanted to hear from people outside the choice boundary as well because they do come into the city, they have involved in the city and are invested in the city. Um, so even if somebody is outside the choice, you know, area, we would still like to hear from them and hear what their thoughts are as well.
Have you been in contact with the neighborhood, neighborhood first groups?
Yes.
I'd say eighty-two responses when it just went out on on the twentieth, I thought was pretty impressive, actually.
Yeah.
It'd just gone out.
I think it, yeah, I think it went out on the seventeenth, so we had eighty-two responses over the weekend.
Thank you. Yeah, I had some questions about that, whether it was applicable, if you didn't live in that dotted line boundary. So thank you for clarifying that.
Yeah, of course. Um, so I did just touch on this, but again, the resident needs assessment was a little bit more extensive. Um, it's one-on-one administration by community partners and it touches on neighborhood characteristics, access to amenities and services, um, public safety, housing, education, health and wellness, income and employment and transportation. And then the outline with comment or content, sorry, is our next step. Um, it includes data on existing conditions and the history of this community and demographics as well. Um, it it will include goals of the plan that are informed by the needs assessments that are ongoing right now. And the vision should address resident needs and hope for the future.
Okay, so our early action activity is another one of our next big steps. And this is actually required as part of the planning grant process. And the choice team is obligated to utilize a specific amount of funding to kick this off. So the actual activity will be created based on feedback from the needs assessment findings and, uh, other input from community partners. So eligible activities can include such things as community gardens, colorful crosswalks, enhanced lighting, but they're not limited to these ideas.
And we budgeted a hundred thousand for that. So we we have an outline, then we obviously have a draft plan and we have a final plan. Uh, so the draft plan is is another big milestone, um, in this process. And and really what it does is is takes things that were defined in the outline, um, which consists of everything from the time we were trying to get our application into HUD for the grant approval, all the way through the surveys, up to what we're hearing from our community partners. All that's going to go into a draft plan. Again, it's just a draft. Um, the final plan is really where we're trying to get, um, which is going to take the feedback we get from everybody in the community, including this body, as to as to what that draft looks like and any tweaks we may want to make, we'll roll into the final plan. But the final plan will also look at execution. Um, how are we going to make that plan happen? You know, what kind of funding's available, grants are available, what resources do we need? Um, who can we leverage to help make this happen? Um, so ultimately, the final plan really will be a conducive document that shows, here's what the transformation should look like, here's the funding that could potentially apply to make this happen, and and here's the people we need to work with to get there. Um, so ultimately, that's kind of really our our end goal at this point. So we got a couple of future things going on that, uh, we have dates behind right now. Um, June twenty-seventh, uh, we are going to take, um, the surveys we received from the target housing sites. We're going to meet with the target housing sites and make sure our understanding is correct of what they were trying to relay in those surveys and present that to them. That's to be on the twenty-seventh, I believe, right around lunchtime over at the C W Brooks Building. August fifteenth is when we're going to share the results with the bigger community. Um, and really that's going to be, you know, uh, some of you may know, um, every year the housing authority has a community fair over at Elgin Station mid-August. This year, we decided to take that, bring it over to our main admin building along the cultural trail there and have it open to the community and really introduce the community to choice. What is choice? What are we hearing? What are we seeing? And and really just make it all about that. Uh, it's going to be a lot bigger than what we've done in the past, but we feel it's important to engage everybody early on, um, especially as we start going through and and getting these plans, draft plans together, final plans together, and start educating the community is what we're trying to accomplish. And that's going to be the date for that. So if you guys could definitely put that one on your calendar, that'd be great. Just to take a step back, um, as you saw, we did have the community partners, we did have the different work groups. Um, those work groups meet monthly and we're hoping in June also to share some of our findings with these surveys with those work groups to start getting feedback, hopefully starting next month.
Any other questions?
I have a question. So on, I don't know what, it doesn't have a page, the the partners page, where it lists the grantee, the co-grantee, the consulting team, the housing task force. And I noticed that, I think, maybe in various parts of this and maybe, um, the, eh, the, uh, senior population of City of Hagerstown is probably about twice that of what. senior population of City of Hagerstown is probably about twice that of Washington County. But I noted in here, and maybe it's in the surveys themselves, but I imagine that, so I think Washington County, it's like eight or nine percent, and in Hagerstown, city boundary, it's about sixteen percent. I think that's the number. And I imagine in the defined area, it's probably even higher than that. And I'm just curious, under the, uh, group, the various chairs, and even in the partners, I did not see like Washington County Commission on Aging or some senior entity. And I noticed in the presentation, there was a lot of discussion about families and youth, you know what I mean, in those activities. I'm just, and then I think maybe this gets to the point of the question of, you know, how did you get the surveys out? But, you know, nobody knows a neighborhood better than a senior retired individual that sees it on a daily basis. And so I'm just curious of, like, how that engagement will be included.
That, that's a good point. I think we should engage the Commission on Aging and help get the word out, especially for those surveys. The Housing Authority itself is, is going directly to our senior population to get, get those surveys done and get their feedback on the neighborhood side, because not all of our communities are part of those target housing sites.
Right.
But I agree, Commission on Aging would be a good asset to help get the word out, I think, for some of those senior communities or senior people that they work with.
And maybe not just the word, but I can remember when we were deliberating on the location of a new senior center back in two thousand and eight, two thousand and nine. And we sent the survey out to the senior population. And I think we had this expectation, we were going to get back this report from that survey that seniors were going to overwhelmingly want things like destinations to go to for interaction. And a majority of the response associated with that report was food security. And so that's why I just look at this and go, okay, how are we engaging the seniors? And how will that be coupled into neighborhood redevelopment? You know, because, you know, I imagine even with inflation and today's number, that that, that that's an even more growing number. And especially, I mean, even where I live, being able to, you know, get to those resources, you know, on a regular, daily basis, is probably becoming difficult.
I agree.
That's a very good point.
Nope, that's good. Absolutely.
No, but appreciate that.
Is the survey available in Spanish?
Don't think so.
No.
It is not at this point.
How difficult would that be to you?
We, I remember some discussion going around about that. I don't remember why we did not, not doing it, but we could revisit it. Is there anybody that you're aware of that, we could talk offline, maybe, that could help translate?
Yeah, Wes will, Wes will give you some.
Little confused on the process here. So, yeah, so you're, you're doing a needs assessment. In order to do a needs assessment, you're gathering information through the surveys. And you've done three different, you're doing three different types of surveys. Target Housing, the business, and neighborhood. But neighborhood, you're doing, in response to my previous question, based, it's, it's, it's basically people driving themselves to your, to your survey, as opposed to you're going to them. Just looking at the map here, if I've done it correctly, there are just under two hundred potential participants in the targeted house survey, housing survey, which seems to me to be rather low, considering, if I can find your little map again, the extensive area that's included that you described to Councilmember Alshire's question. I mean, there's, there's a lot of residential property in this boundary. I mean, a ton more than two hundred people. So I'm trying to understand how you're going to create a needs assessment, because you said earlier, it's based on what the people say they need. How you're creating a needs assessment when, at this point, you're, you're expecting people to drive themselves, even with marketing or getting the word out, as you said, for all the people that live in this area, from roughly a hundred and ninety residents that are in your facilities?
Right.
And I'm, I don't, I don't see how that works.
Well, that's a very good question. So because this is a HUD-funded grant, HUD does require what we call the target housing sites to be there. It also requires a sixty-five percent response rate to the target housing surveys. As part of this grant, that is the only survey they require us to do. We did not want to leave it there. We, we wanted to hear from the community itself, so that's why we created the other two surveys. So to kind of take a step back, we're required to hit a certain threshold of the target or not on the others.
Yeah.
So that's why there was a little bit more emphasis, we're pushed on that, because in order to successfully complete this process, we have to hit that benchmark.
So that's fine if you're only talking about a needs assessment for those targeted housing prod, 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 uh, facilities, properties, is the word I was looking for. But again, your area is huge relative to that. So again, I don't understand, and you're saying HUD, that's all that HUD requires.
That's not what we want to require.
I know you want to do more, but I don't understand how that's all they can require. If, if indeed, the, the area to be considered is so substantial, relatively speaking. I mean, I'm looking also at here, at this needs assessment, the photograph and the description of one-on-one administration. That's why I asked the question, are you sending people out à la census takers? Are you sending people out to go door-to-door to try to gather this information from everybody in this, in this, in this area? I keep losing the page of your map.
Yes, so, so we don't have the door-to-door for the, the business or the, um, neighborhood. We don't have the door-to-door there.
It's really the residences, the residents that I'm referring to. Businesses, they'll self-select.
Right.
Yeah, because they'll want to help, they'll want to participate, they should want to help to participate. But, you know, people who live in their lives every day, there's, there's so many other things that they're doing that even if they get a flyer or a, say, I think I saw a door hanger or something. Sorry, I missed you. I'm, I'm, I'm sorry, I'm just struggling with how you're going to get any quantitative results back from your survey.
I don't see a reason, I mean, you're, you're suggesting like door hangers or?
I'm suggesting I don't see how that's going to work.
Okay.
And I'm hoping for, and maybe not tonight, today, but maybe for something that, that maybe an idea that you guys might have.
And we can definitely explore ways to really get the word out more and try to get a better result, because really, we want more than what we have.
Because what you're doing.
I'm sorry, but didn't you guys just do hot dogs down in Douglas Court and we'd surveys? Because, you know, we'll walk through and so.
Yeah, that's one of the targeted.
And so they were down there and serving hot dogs and had, you know, and had like a community engagement thing. So I don't want to, them to be under fire as if there's not any kind of outreach going on, because that did happen.
So it sounds to me.
It was good, too.
Like try to hit the, get the non-target housing sites more involved.
Exactly, exactly. Because. I'm looking at your timeline, I'm looking at your Gantt chart here, I'm looking at all these steps. And what I'm seeing is, everything is going to be based on what you get out of these surveys. You're, 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 you're going to create an outline, you're going to create a draft plan, you're going to create a final plan. But it all starts with what comes out of these surveys. And if the data in the surveys isn't, sorry if I can't think of the right word.
I know.
Complete, maybe?
Yeah.
Then everything else is skewed. It, from my, that's just me speaking.
And there's a lot of data that was provided by the city upfront, just for the application itself, those kind of things. I, I hear what you're saying, I don't disagree with you. But there's also a lot of other data that's going to go in just beyond the surveys. Like I said, just to get the application, and there was a ton of data the city had to pull, the Housing Authority had to pull. All that's being taken into account as well. But, but I think, to your point, which I think we all agree with, we'll look for a better method or more.
I mean, I'm looking at that list. And everybody that showed up because they think there's a piece of the pie, put them to work.
Well, and, and they actually have been very involved, and there are more people asking to be involved every day. But I, I think, to, to your point, that's where a lot of our community partners are getting involved as well and providing their input at what they're seeing at the boots-on-the-ground level with the folks that they see every day.
I'm excited about this. I think there's a great upside at the other end, especially considering the volume of what the potential grant could be with implementation. So I hope that you'll be back at each one of these little steering committee dots.
We'll be back as long as you want us to be. You just let us know, we'll be here.
Because this is, this is, this is exciting stuff.
It is exciting.
It's very exciting.
I did have one quick question for you guys. And that's, so I understand the planning grant is so that you can, you've got funding to go ahead and go through and get the implement, you know, get the whole transformation plan put together. You've got a timeline here. Once you have that, though, for this implementation grant, which I assume is the ultimate pie-in-the-sky goal, right, is to get this implementation grant, once we've gotten our final plan put together, what's kind of the timeline for here and back if they're going to be awarding us the implementation grant?
So it's a competitive grant. I think this year was a little bit less, but last year, I believe, was a three-hundred-and-fifty-million-dollar grant. At fifty billion dollars apiece, there's not a lot of room there. It's not unusual for the Housing Authority, and I'm sure the city as well, to go out and apply for a particular grant, maybe not get it, maybe reapply next year, same hopes. So as soon as that grant comes out and we're able to apply, we will be applying for it. But aside from that, too, I mean, there's other revenue streams that we'll be looking at. A lot of state funding can be put into this, tax credits, things like that, that will help that fifty billion dollars go a lot further.
Sure.
Uh, if you go to the Choice Neighborhood webpage, you can look at, you know, what the planning grant has ultimately brought in as far as investments in the community. Some of them are upwards of two-hundred-plus million dollars, with just leveraging.
Just from the planning side of it.
Yeah, and again, it's, I'd like to say it was a guarantee, but unfortunately, the implementation grant is not a guarantee. But by going through the planning process, you do have a, a better chance of receiving those funds.
Sure. So, so that's like a yearly grant that you.
It's a yearly.
Apply for to see if we get the one of the seven communities that get awarded, right?
Exactly.
Gotcha. Okay, thank you.
Which, the odds aren't bad, considering Hagerstown was one of fourteen.
Yeah.
Yeah.
To get the planning grant, so.
I think there were.
And had high marks for the visit.
Yeah, I think there were a total of, what, twenty-eight applications for the planning grant? And then we were one of fourteen that actually received that, so.
Great.
Yeah.
Thank you for your hard work.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, up next, we have the Hagerstown, Hagerstown Youth Council updates for the two thousand and twenty-three, two thousand and twenty-four session. Rachel and Marjorie Jo, you can stay right there.
Thank you.
So this evening, the Hagerstown Youth Council will be presenting an update on the two thousand and twenty-three, two thousand and twenty-four session. I just want to quickly thank the partner group, city staff, elected officials, community organizations, businesses, and community partners that supported us all year long. We couldn't have done it without you, so thank you. And now I am honored to introduce the Hagerstown Youth Council Chair, Anna Small Simmons, and Co-Chair Joseph Fox.
Hello, good afternoon. So firstly, this year, our Hagerstown Youth Council was expanded from eleven members to eighteen members. I think this was a good expansion because we have representation from nearly every single school within Hagerstown limits. And I believe that it's good that we're getting representation and we're hearing from voices through various parts of Hagerstown. Our first session was on October ninth, two thousand and twenty-three, and we have had meetings every other Monday since then. And we've had a total of eighteen meetings. Outside of these meetings, we've also, also dedicated countless hours to planning our events and various initiatives.
Yeah, so whenever we started this session, we all had general goals and objectives that we wanted to achieve. And so whenever we asked ourselves, asked ourselves how we wanted to impact the community, we all agreed that we wanted to increase youth participation in community events through, through targeted outreach and promotion. We wanted to encourage youth to actively participate in community service by utilizing and establishing partnerships with local organizations. And we wanted to make sure we provided a platform for youth-led voices to be heard and opportunities to contribute onto the decision-making process. And so that, a lot of that goes in hand-in-hand with what we've done with our event planning. And so our main goals with our event planning have been to plan youth-focused events that promote participation, leadership development, and community engagement. And we wanted also to use these events to address and advocate for issues that affect the youth in Hagerstown, as identified by us. And we, of course, are very active in our school communities that allows us to get a greater wealth of ideas. And then we also wanted to provide opportunities for youth to showcase their strengths, talents, and ideas through entirely youth-planned events. And that, again, we have, we get ideas from the communities that we're all from. And so, and a very important goal that we all have is to expand on what we've done in previous years. So the previous session before this one, the way things worked out, we ended up focusing on establishing our name and getting our name out there and increasing our social media presence. And so we wanted to build upon that. So we wanted to increase our social media engagement presence to reach a wider audience of youth in the community. And we wanted to continue utilizing effective marketing methods to increase awareness and engagement. And we wanted to improve the accessibility of information and resources available to address the needs of youth in our community.
This year, we've also had a bunch of guest speakers, and we've loved hosting them because they've given us a lot of advice and just some sort of guidance on all the events that we planned. So this year, we had the following guest speakers. Mayor Takisha Martinez, City Administrator Scott Nice Warner, Community Engagement Officer Brittany Arizmendi, USMH Executive Director Dr. Jacob Ashby, Washington Girls Percival, Vicki Sterling, Learn City, Andrew Keller.
And so the main event that we held this year was Charge for Change at the Fairgrounds. And so this was a free community event planned by us. And so it was div, um, community fitness fun. We had a three K, three K runner stroll. There was local performances, we had guest speakers. Community partners provided information and resources to helping the city's youth. And we had, the, the performances from youth throughout the day brought a very special energy to the day. And the field games contributed to a very strong sense of community and a commitment to building a stronger Hagerstown.
We also had a lot of community support during this event. We had a bunch of community organizations, speakers, event sponsors, and performers. And I believe that they contributed a lot to making this event very educational, entertaining, and overall very successful.
Throughout the year, we've had various volunteer opportunities. So we started with the Fall Folk Festival, then we went to the Halloween Block Party. We had Photos of the Grinch at Holly, in Holly Fest. We had the Downtown Tree Lighting, which I was the gingerbread man for. We had the Saint Patty's Day Run Fest. We helped with Envy's Tenth Inning Event, the Earth and Arbor Day Event. Huge shout-out to the Department of Natural Resources and Parks and Rec Department and Aqua with for that because they are so crucial to that event. It was a very fun event, and we also helped out with the Spring Handmade Market.
Outside of our main Charge for Change event, we also had Maryland Youth Advisory Council applications. And this is basically Hagerstown Youth Council for the whole state. We applied for a grant to get some extra funding for our Charge for Change event. Unfortunately, we did not receive it, but we still made it to, we were one of the finalists in this, and it was a very successful process in just practicing applying for things like that sort. We also had the Global Youth Inclusion Summit, and our members Nico Martinez Martel and Shra Ta Vista were able to represent Hagerstown Youth Council on the panel, catalyst for change, building tomorrow's local leaders. And then we also had a lot of representation in the State of the City video from Hagerstown Youth Council. Various of our members were a part of that. And then we also had Nico Martinez Martel was able to have the opportunity to shadow our mayor for a day. And then we also developed an outline for the Youth Poet Laureate Program. So in this program, we're going to have a youth within the Hagerstown represent, you know, we're going to have poets. And we've created a process for this application and an interview process, and we're planning on having one in the coming year.
So with our outreach and engagement, we wanted to provide some of our statistics. And so in December of two thousand and twenty-two, so that was right as we were getting our, not this session, but the previous session going, we had six hundred and twenty-five followers on Facebook, three hundred and thirty-one on Instagram. Now we are up to eight hundred and fifty followers on Facebook and over five hundred on Instagram. And so since October twenty, twenty, since October twenty-three, which is the beginning of this session, we have had over thirty-seven thousand impressions on Facebook and over nine hundred content interactions on Instagram. And so we, just shows how much more we're getting our name out there. Because content interactions, that's when people like and comment, that so many more people are seeing those posts, whether put on people's stories and stuff like that.
On the day of the event at Fairgrounds Park, there was a great amount of people from the community, from. From this event, we expanded the reach of Hagerstown Youth Council and connected with local nonprofits, city council officials, and other community changemakers. We had 102 registered and 57 runners completed the race.
So throughout this session, and for many of us in the Youth Council, we've realized how important it is for the youth to be involved in our community. And so in addition to learning how much, how important it is for us to be involved, we've also realized how challenging it is to get other people to realize that importance. And so as we continue to bring more people into our events, we are also recognizing the importance of proper networking communication and how to reach those people. But, and so we're also getting more information on how community brings us together. And so as we continue to develop ourselves and how we recognize ourselves in the community and how much and how important this community is to us and how we can help it, we're slowly realizing how we can distribute these ideas to everyone else. But we, of course, are realizing how challenging that tends to be.
Thank you for your time, and we hope you recognize all the hard work you've put forward this year. This is my second year with Hagerstown Youth Council, and I believe we've had a big, much bigger impact in this second year. I know just at South High, we've had a lot more people talking about, asking about applications for the following year. And I think we've really increased our community impact and outreach this year. So thank you for your time today.
We're not done.
Oh, okay.
Any questions from any of you first?
I just have two comments. And the first is, under the introduction, when you listed the various schools, and I'm glad that all the schools represented that happened to be in the city, but I was very impressed that you made that specific notation, that these aren't city schools. These are schools that happened to be in the city, and they include a lot of kids from all around that greater area. So I'm glad that you see that differentiation, because I think that often, at the county level, frankly speaking, that it is a sort of stigma to say, those are the city schools. And they aren't that way. They just aren't. I've never accepted that. The second is, later on, and I don't know who wrote this, but under the impacts and results, they use the term "community changemakers." Because I can tell you way too often, as an adult sitting in these sort of adult settings, and in these adult meetings and in having these discussions, how all the things that we're supposed to be working on and changing, they often refer to us as leaders, and I just don't see that. I don't think I've ever really accepted that term. Because I think any person in the room and at the table is there in a collaborative fashion, and there isn't a leader in the room. We're not in charge. You know, there just happen to be folks of different ages at the table that are working to change things. And so I appreciate both of those references that you guys made.
Thank you.
I'm just curious, what is the age range of people involved in the Youth Council or that can be involved in the Youth Council?
I believe it's freshman to?
Yeah, it's freshmen to seniors.
So high school?
Yeah, high school.
Okay, okay. And so what is your succession plan as seniors, you know, graduate, move on, and young people are coming in to ensure the changemaking process continues?
Well, we have a mixture of age groups right now. Like, we currently have freshmen through seniors, and their terms are, I believe, maximum of two years. So there are some people that are coming in every year. Like, it's not like every two years we wipe out the pool. It's like an overlap between that. So I think it's good that the people that are coming in new every year will have people that have already experienced a year of Hagerstown Youth Council experience. And then also usually in their second year, people start running for chair and co-chair. And then those people are usually dedicated to leading and making sure we continue changing and having an impact in our community.
Yeah. And Ms. Rachel Paul, she does an excellent job of helping us out. And so, you know, we don't really have many issues with people assuming leadership ability, assuming leadership and being focused as a council, so.
It's not lost on me that your presentation is right after the Hagerstown Choice presentation and the opportunities there may be to get involved in this process. You guys sat here and you heard that. If you need more information, those two ladies right there will make sure that you have it. Because I think there's a great opportunity for synergy there. Great.
I just have to say that it's tremendous how much support you have behind you, you know? You have practically, if not all, of the council here. So that's, just getting people to come in and sit with these meetings is tremendous. But beyond that, everything that you have done this year from when it first started to now is just mind-blowing. So watching all of this is just, you know, really, really heartwarming to me. And Rachel, every time I get the opportunity to tell you how great of a job you're doing, I would take it. So thank you very, very much for everything that you're doing, and congratulations on an extremely successful year. I have one question. What can the body of the, this body, right, what can we do to help support you? Other than like speaking engagements and things like that? Do you feel as if you have a true voice in the representation of the youth within the government decisions that are affecting the youth? You can say no. It's okay.
I think, would you agree? I feel like we need to be, we ourselves need to be more involved.
Yeah, I think maybe attendance of more city council meetings in the following years will be good.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, I was gonna say, I feel like we, as a council, need to become more involved in this as well. Because I feel like it needs to be a mutual relationship between us. And so I feel like as a council, we need to be more tentative, and I think it'll just naturally happen from there.
Yeah, I think especially as we're growing as a council, I think we probably should just, we've been focusing a lot on our community aspect, but I think also policy plays a big part in community and the representation of youth. So I think we could definitely focus on that in the coming years.
And this is a very, we have a lot of freshmen on this current council. Like, we have a lot of freshmen and sophomores. And so those, these people are very responsible individuals. They know.
Yeah, those are SGA presidents, secretaries, all that.
They're very persistent people, and I think they will do a very good job at doing, you know, having that relationship.
I'll say pulling off that 3K this year was quite an accomplishment that you guys did. So congratulations on, it's no small feat to pull off an event like that and get these sponsors and speakers and everything you guys pulled together. But going forward, whatever you guys need from us, you know, please be in our, be in our mailbox, you know? Get us to come to your meetings, whatever we can do to help. You know, we'll do anything we can, so. Thank you guys.
Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. All right, now I know why the mayor, I don't want to say. All right, now, I understand. Okay. I am going to go over the agenda for the preliminary agenda review. If you have any questions, please stop me. What? No, except you. We will call the meeting to order. We'll go through the invocation by probably Councilmember Schindler. We'll have the Pledge of the Flag. We'll do some announcements.
I'll do it one time.
Do I have to go through this meeting, go through the whole thing?
Yeah.
Okay. We'll talk about the rules of procedure. The use of cell phones during the meetings is restricted. All correspondence for distribution to elected officials should be provided to the city clerk and should include a copy for the city clerk for the inclusion in the official record. Our meeting schedule for June, Tuesday, June 4th, we'll have a work session at 4:00. Tuesday, June 11th, we'll have a work session at 4:00. Tuesday, June 18th, we will have a regular session at 7:00. And on Tuesday, June 25th, we will not have a meeting because we'll be in Ocean City.
There is one correction.
We are correcting it already.
June 4th is at 3 o'clock. The work session will be at 3:00 on June 4th.
On June 4th?
So the water guys are coming.
Oh, the water guys.
Is that, is that the whole work session starts then, or is there a special?
No, work session starts, yeah. So we're not here all night.
Again, I would like to restate that June 25th, there was no meeting because we will be at MML in Ocean City, Maryland. Some of us, not all of us. We will entertain some guests. We'll have the Maryland Municipal Leagues If I Were a Mayor Essay Contest Recognition, which is always a super fun time, the Historic Preservation Awards. We will then go into some public hearings. We will have the Land Management Co. Text Amendments for the Industrial District Book Regulations, the Local Conversion District Overlay and Landmark Overlay at 132 Bethel Street for American Hall, and the Local Conversion District Overlay at 401 Center Street. We'll then have our citizen comments, go through the minutes for April 2nd, April 9th, April 23rd, and April 30th. We'll then go with the consent agenda. The city clerk, the city code update, updating and printing of city code, general code for $10,600. Engineering, number one, will be a change order increase to PO to curb and sidewalk contract for relocation of the cultural trail. Henson and Son, Inc., from Hagerstown, Maryland, for $69,373.07. A change order to increase PO to include design of signals at Antietam Street/Summit Avenue and Salem Avenue/Westside Avenue for KCI Technologies from Sparks, Maryland for $6,100. And number three, the AutoCAD renewal subscription for FY25. DTL Solution LLC from Herndon, Virginia for $10,427.12. We'll also talk about finance, Arista Information Systems, utility bill processing and mailing, Arista Information Systems, Duluth, Georgia for $192,000. Human Resources, Administration of Medical Coverage, United Healthcare from Chicago, Illinois for $362,201. Specific stop-loss insurance, the annual premium from Tokyo Marine HCC from Kennesaw, Georgia, $544,766. The Administration of Dental Coverage, United Concordia in Hunt Valley, Maryland for $44,508. The city-sponsored life insurance, voluntary long-term disability and voluntary life insurance from Hartford Life and Accident Insurance Company in Hartford, Connecticut, $52,446. Under police will be the Arctic Wolf Software Security Package from Winslow Technology Group in Waltham, Massachusetts for $25,537.47. Under Public Works, the R22 refrigerant for the chiller system, the reimbursement to Hagerstown Amateur Athletic Association, $10,651.41. The fiber connection to the city parking garages, Skyline Technology Solutions, Glen Burley, Maryland, $54,517.48. Multiple repairs to unit number 92 Streetsweeper, Maryland Industrial Truck in Lenthica, Maryland, for $13,198.98. Under utilities will be light for FY25 Linework Services blanket contract, Diamond Electric in Boonsboro, Maryland, $250,000. Also under light, FY25 Electric Equipment Refurbishment Blanket Contract for Southeastern Transformer Company and Dunn, North Carolina for $75,000. Also under light, FY25 Regulatory Consulting Services Blanket Contract with GDA Associates, Inc. from Marietta, Georgia, $195,000. Also under light, FY25 Electric Underground Locating Blanket Contract, USIC Locating Services LLC in Indianapolis, Indiana, $60,000. Also under light, FY25 Flame-Resistant Clothing Blanket Contract, Hudson Workwear, Brexville, Ohio for $28,000. Under light, FY25 Software Support, Millsoft Utility Solutions in Abilene, Texas, $36,785. Under water, aluminum trench shielding system, Shore Equip Supply, Elk Ridge, Maryland, $28,427. Underwater, Antietam Source Water PER, Hazen and Sawyer, Baltimore, Maryland, $898,375. Underwater, Antietam Source Water Project PER, Black and Beach in Gethersburg, Maryland for $699,280. Under wastewater, the Treatment Plant Improvement Project PER, Black and Beach, Gethersburg, Maryland, $662,000. Under wastewater, implant-influent pump emergency purpose AR and E in Hagerstown, Maryland, $213,953.92. Under unfinished business, an approval of an ordinance for water rates FY25, an approval of an ordinance, wastewater rates FY25, an approval of an ordinance, City of Hagerstown General Obligation Debt for the Field House, approval of an annexation resolution I-70 Right-Away, 18320 and 18306, Colonel Henry H. Douglas Drive and Colonel Henry H. Douglas Drive Right-Away, approval of an annexation resolution, Heaven's Heights Homes on Southern Boulevard. Under new business, we'll have an introduction of an ordinance, amendments to City Code Chapter 117, recycling and refuse collection, approval of a resolution, standard user agreement for driver training facility with Maryland Police and Correctional Training Commission, approval of a resolution revising parking facilities, rates, and fees, approval of non-union pay scale, approval of Hagerstown Police Department non-union sworn pay scale, approval of Light Division FY25 Inventory Procurement Funds, approval of amendments to community development block grant annual action plans FY2015 to FY2024 to reconcile the budget activity, approval of requests for proposals for grants management portal, approval of elevator maintenance services contract, 7-124 to 63025, approval of HVAC service and maintenance contract, 7-12024 to 6302025, approval of city funding support for the Dolman Black Heritage Museum sponsorship for 2024 Juneteenth event. We'll have city administrative comments, mayor and council comments, and we will then adjourn. Does anyone have any questions?
I do. The first question I have is the, the change order for the curb and sidewalk replacement program for the relocation of the cultural trail. Is this, is this specifically for the crosswalk?
Yes.
So have we reached a determination that we're going to put the crosswalk in as designed?
As, yes.
Okay. I I'm gonna ask if that'd be moved if it's on the consent agenda.
I agree.
Yeah, I don't think we've got enough followers. Okay.
I'll just go ahead and add it. I'll take it off the bear and add it to new business before we publish the consent agenda.
And then I had a couple of questions for Nancy on, let me get to it. Don't lose them. The water, Antietam Source Water PER, Hazen and Sawyer, and then the one for Black and Beach. So are these the, are these for preliminary engineering reports from both of these engineering contractors for the presentation that was made to consider the possibility of installing a 5MGD plant on the Antietam Creek?
Yes, they are moved for that.
Okay. So one of them is for $900,000, and the other one is for $700,000, correct?
Correct.
So I want to be able to recall, when we had that meeting and we said that this, you know, that this idea may have some possibility. And we said we'll have to do some preliminary analysis. Is that what this million and a half dollars is for?
Yes. The Hazen and Sawyer is to look at the viability of the Antietam as a source, the, for appropriation and treatability. The state is also requiring that if, you know, on the wastewater side, Black and Beach, the processed wastewater associated with the water treatment process, the state will require it to be discharged into the sanitary sewer system. So the state is also requiring that we evaluate the impact on the wastewater treatment plant for that processed wastewater.
Okay. So here's the concern I have. I feel like we're doing a lot of this at the direction of the state. And the state's concern with the repairs and reinstitution of the Edgemont Reservoir resource and, and the improvements for the Brechner Plan. And I guess the concern I have, and maybe you can correct me if I'm wrong, these are city funds that are going to be administered for this process. Is that correct? And so I think the difficulty that I'm having is we're now eight years, I think it's eight years. it's eight years, eight years removed from where we embarked on upgrades and improvements to the Edgemont Reservoir to restore that water source that exists and has measurable capability. And I don't know that I could answer to the average ratepayer what we've spent on the efforts for that restoration, for that existing resource that we've owned for a hundred years.
Yes, since the early, late 1800s, I believe.
So we're getting ready to adopt increases to the water and sewer rates, and the water rates, I'll just focus on that. And for me, it's a big jump to be going from, we spent an unknown amount on engineering and design to upgrade Edgemont, right, and get that system back up and running, to now we're going to take that funding, and I don't have a problem looking at the Antietam, and I said that from the beginning, as a possible source or a possible solution, but I'm having difficulty understanding what we're buying for a million and a half dollars to make that determination, you know, and I don't know because I'm not that, from that engineering firm, or the two that we've directed or are going to direct in that manner. But the state gets sort of a free pass because they're directing us what to do, but they're not one sitting at the table having to raise rates or spend the money to go in multiple different directions without a solution for the customer base. And I think that's where I'm having difficulty is if someone were to ask me, well, what did you do or where did you get for the eight years' worth of effort and unknown amount of money to correct your existing resource? And, you know, why does it take a million and a half dollars to determine whether the Antietam has enough water and if the water is of a quality to be able to use? That's a lot of money to determine those two things.
It is. Edgemont, we have invested, I want to say it's between a million, a million and 1.3 million, and right now we're still setting at about a 30% design. We've never been able to move off of the 30% design, and that's because of the probable maximum precipitation event analysis to determine what the spillway has to look like, what it has, how much water it has to hold, has to hold back.
Even though it's held that for a hundred years?
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, that's, that regulation, I believe, comes down through the Army Corps of Engineers to the state, but so we're still setting on, I think it was 1.3 million and 30% design, and we've been there for a number of years. These two contracts will evaluate both the water and the wastewater side, and we will have, when everything's said and done, have at least the, at a minimum, some preliminary early design for both. Will we be at 30%? No, not likely. Once, you know, once...
So maybe here's the disconnect then. If, because my recollection of that conversation was twofold. One is to have an engineering entity tell us that the Antietam produces enough and that the water is of a quality to use, and that, and I'm just, just me, this isn't the rest of the council speaking, but the other component to that for me was that that analysis come with a probable solution for storage capacity as well. And I don't know from what's being proposed if that's included in that analysis, but if it's not, then what we're doing is we're spending a lot of money to do engineering work for what I feel are two fairly less expensive questions to resolve out of the gate, and that even if that is a solution, that leaves us with two systems that have hours' worth of storage and delivery capability and not days. And that's what I'm struggling with.
And are you referring to the quarry studies?
Correct.
Okay. As of right now, there are no permitted quarries in Maryland, and actually Hazen &amp; Sawyer is working on some quarry studies through American Waterworks Association. I can tell you we're not there yet on quarries, and it's not, and I can't tell you when we will be there, but I can tell you that that is something that's being studied by various regulatory entities as a possible source water. I would say that would be a raw water storage. You would still have to have the treatment plant to treat the water, to meet drinking water standards from the quarry to, into the distribution system. You wouldn't be able to take that source, of course, and immediately use it. Finished water storage, we are looking at the Zone 5, the tank for in Zone 5. In fact, last month, mayor and council approved some work with Hazen &amp; Sawyer to look at that and what the size of the tank would need to be, and that's actually part of our five-year CIP for those improvements, which would include finished water storage. That would be an additional, finished water storage in our tank that would, finished water storage tanks are kind of like white spots in the pipe. They hold additional water in the benefit outage, and they also, they provide fire protection, and they also assist with system pressure. But any quarry supply, any raw water supply would require a treatment plant that had the capability of treating that particular source, and with the Antietam, that's one of the things we're looking at. The studies, the study, the proposal that was put together by Hazen &amp; Sawyer and Black &amp; Beach included numerous meetings with MDE, both the Clean Water Group and the Safe Water, Clean Water Act Group and the Safe Drinking Water Act Group, so that we knew that we would be meeting the criteria, that they, that we would be evaluating the criteria that they needed to see in order to be able to cite the source. So, you know, we do have an open dialogue with MDE regarding the Antietam as a source on both the drinking water and the wastewater side. To date, there's been no, there's been no work done by any engineering firm to look at the rehab of the Brechner plant. We can't really do that until, can't really move forward with that until the source is finalized to know what capacity that plant needs to operate at, the minimum flow and the maximum flow.
Okay, thank you. I'm going to ask if this can be moved to a regular vote as well. I don't have any.
Yeah, I don't see all of the motions in the packet unless I'm missing something.
There are some that are not included.
Does that include business?
The two of the pay scale are not.
Does that, New Business Item K? Is that, is that anywhere in today's packet or next week's packet?
I don't think it's there.
I saw that one.
It's the very last, very last thing on the clip. It's not on for the special session today, it's on for the regular session next week.
Okay.
So it's, it's in with all the preliminary that was on the clip, it's the very last one.
Oh, wait, they're sticking together, I'm sorry. My last one is a, okay, I'm sorry. They were sticking together, the pages were stuck together. So this is not sufficient. How do we go about making this motion sufficient and to be, to meet the criteria that the council set in place at the discussion?
As it reads now, it's on a reimbursement basis, is how it's written, is that?
And following the receipt of the application, which is...
Yeah, but there's a lot more than just the application. The application itself requires a lot more, and it doesn't refer to any of that, and that's, that's what I mean. So I don't know how we go about doing that, but between now and next week, we need to make this comprehensive, in my opinion.
What additional information do you want included? Or would you recommend?
I, I'll be happy to go and pull my notes from the meeting, or we had that discussion. I don't have those with me, in front of me, but I can, I'm happy to...
They submitted an application, they submitted a budget with that application that included what they were going to utilize, the $10,504. So they have submitted everything that others have submitted.
So the required documents and application have been submitted and received?
Right, right.
Wasn't that just today, wasn't it? Wasn't that just today or just late last week?
That was late last week, right.
It just, like I said, it just appears to me to be, given the depth of conversation that was had, it appears to be insufficient, but, okay. And those are all separate items at that point in the agenda, right?
Yes. Okay, move on. Thank you, gentlemen. Up next, FY 2025 Budget Review, Michelle Hefford and Brooke Garth.
You're never going to be asked to be up there, are you?
What?
You're never going to be asked to be up there, are you?
I think it's, I don't understand why you guys are asking so many questions. No one ever asks this many questions, ever.
You know you're up there.
Yeah, I know.
How are you?
Good evening.
Thanks. That is very true. So we'll try to get as much information through that we can, but also be cognizant of the time, because I know there's a lot more to come on the agenda. Hopefully, this is our final budget review before the adoption for the fiscal year '25 budget, and then we'll move back several more times. I think what we'll do, because there's been so much conversation already around water and wastewater, and you're going to be looking more in depth in just a couple of weeks at water rates, and part of that will be looking at the expenses and the infrastructure. I think what we'll do is just do overview this evening of the golf and stormwater funds and their projections, and then if there is any last remaining questions that the body has, please let us know prior to the vote later this evening. Okay.
I'm going to wait for him to come back with his book so I can go get mine.
Yeah, it's just going to be Matt making it.
Understeep.
Yeah, or else it just...
Actually, we only have a quorum.
It's all good.
Okay, you have three of them.
Oh, I thought it was eight.
So golf. What we'll say about golf is, the golf course has been closed for a little while, as many of you may, may not have known, we've been going through a, interesting enough, a stormwater project there. So the golf course just reopened yesterday, Monday, the 20th, and I think they had a very good turnout. People were impressed to be back, so that's all good news. And we'll just wait.
He did? Did he go get his book? His book's right there.
Are you sure?
Madam Mayor, for the, for the meeting, may we go ahead, or do you wish us to wait until there's a quorum back at the table?
We do have one.
Yeah, you got three of them.
Perfect, okay. So let's, let's turn to the financial projections, projection section six on page 28, and we'll review the golf course.
Excuse me, I got the numbers.
Okay, all right. So the information here is very familiar, much what we have looked at at all the other funds. And on page 28, you'll see two years of history for the golf course for both fiscal year '22 and '23, followed by a current fiscal year '24 budget and estimated actions where we thought we're going to be by June 30th. And in the middle column is fiscal year '25 proposed budget. I will say that the golf course, though, the City of Hagerstown, we consider this to be an enterprise fund, it is one of the only funds that is an enterprise fund that we will put general fund stipends and general fund transfers to support it. And everybody says, Michelle, why can you do that if it's an enterprise fund? The answer is, the golf fund, the City of Hagerstown refers to it as a self-supporting fund, and it's the way that the fund was originally established. However, by all other definitions, it's not truly a self-supporting fund, it's not meant to be like water where only those customers are, and the service charges are paying for the infrastructure and thingy there. It's much like our local Potterfield Pool, it's like some of our other parks and wrecks and our other amenities. So that is why we can do general fund transfers here. If you look in fiscal year '25, we do not have included or in anticipating any rate increases or changes that weren't already discussed. Total operating revenues outside of the general fund transfers, $378,000, with operating expenses of $641,000. So you can kind of see why the transfers and the stipends are needed. Halfway down the page, or a little further down the page, I'll turn it over to Brooke if you want. There's only really, when we get to the bottom, one item that's truly capital that we have in the fiscal year '25 budget, and that's in the CIP section, and you don't have to turn to that page if you just want to let them know about the...
It's just vehicles and equipment. So for FY '25, there is $107,000 budgeted, and that's for the replacement of two mowers, one for $18,000, one for $89,000.
And in '22 and '23, especially in fiscal year '23, we had a little bit of additional monies remaining, and at the end of the year, I did not transfer those back over into the general fund because they were for things that we delayed or deferred, so I left them in that fund and rolled it over, so that the goal is for fiscal year '25, we don't have to put as much back there because we're starting to do those projects. We'll move to stormwater, unless you have anything? I'm sorry.
No good.
I was wondering if any of that money is available for stump removal.
Which money? In the golf one?
Yeah.
At the golf course?
Yes.
It could be.
I mean, there are tons of unsightly stumps.
Okay.
Which makes for an unsightly golf course, in my opinion.
All right. So financial projection, section six on page 28. So yes, removal of stumps would come into the maintenance and upkeep of the golf course, and monies in this fund absolutely would cover those types of things.
But not specific, right? Does somebody have to decide to do that?
I think that's Eric's question, I see him looking at us.
It's all part of the general maintenance as we get to that, whether we, whether it's any type of tree trimming or stump removal.
But there's, there's money in there to be able to do that if we want to do that, is what you're saying.
There's money in overall maintenance, whether or not that will specifically be used to remove tree stumps or some other type of priority maintenance if something else happens, really...
I mean, we just spent...
$800,000? How much was the stream?
Stream restoration?
Mm-hmm. I mean, almost a million dollars for stream restoration. For stream restoration? I mean. There, there's. The golf course should be a beautiful spot. You got all these stumps everywhere. So I just think that it's something that we should, and that's why I was wondering if there's money for it, so, okay.
It would be in their operating costs and there is operating funds available, so absolutely if, if that is part of the, what they're doing, yes. And we do have a contractor for. Services.
Okay.
So I went by there today, I haven't got a chance to go out since the relocation. It's been a short period of time, but I, I certainly plan to. And as much as we refer to it as a stormwater management project, it was clearly an investment in the course. It's playability, it's, it's, it's challenge. You know, which, which welcomes additional golfers to want to go there. That said, for the average layperson, looking at the budget and looking at the golf course, and I think I say this every year. This says, you know, why are we losing two hundred and fifty thousand dollars on the golf course every year? The reality is. That's about a penny of your tax money. So in the grand scheme of things, the average taxpayer, like me, spends about twelve dollars of the tax money that you collect. To have a golf course. So we can either have that golf course for about twelve bucks and have it the beautiful place that, that we want it to be. Or we don't have a golf course and it becomes, you know, some other commercial thing. And we lose that sort of green space, you know, in, in that welcoming atmosphere. Into the city and so I'd much rather, you know, my brothers would, would have that. The reality is, and folks say, well, why don't you raise the weights, raise rates so that we have enough money, and here's the reality. Can I say this too, right?
You do.
If. We had about eighteen thousand rounds, and I didn't even see the book, but I'm guessing sixteen to eighteen thousand rounds, which is a busy year. We would need twenty-eight to thirty thousand rounds a year to make the golf course self-supporting and affordable to people that want to use it. But if you had twenty-eight thousand rounds on a nine-hole golf course in the course of time that it's open in the year. It would be even more frustrating. You know, than, than otherwise to, to have that many players and move along in that type of timeframe and the average day that it would take. You just, the, the numbers just don't work, and so.
That's correct. The other thing it would do is wear out the course.
Yeah, it wouldn't be.
Completely, and it looks great for that.
Yeah, you have to, yeah, you have to regulate that, you know, some of our staff is, I have some of my staff in rec side. I'm saying, hey, we need more tournaments, which they've done, which is, I think, from four to six tournaments a year. And I have my maintenance staff going, whoa, 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 because you're wearing out the course. And so there's a balancing act there of, of having lots of players and generating revenue to cover our costs as much, as best we can without destroying the course.
Not only that, but it's not really a tournament place. I mean, it just, it just isn't like.
It's more of a tournament place for those that don't normally feel they can get into a tournament.
What I'm saying is, is. I think it's used during the daily differently than you sort of set up a time for your average eighteen-hole course.
Yeah, we don't take reservations and stuff, right?
It's just used more, you know, regularly.
In our rates, we've compared time and time again with other courses, nine-hole courses that are in the area and try to keep them close to those rates or comparable to that in Black Rock as best we can.
In places like Black Rock and, and Green Castle Greens and things like that should thank the city for having this course. And I say that because it is the course of choice to get people into the game of golf. That's just the reality. You know, the, the average absolute beginner is not going to pay the fifty or sixty dollars at a regimented eighteen-hole course. You know, in the same way, I, I mean, that, that's, and so I think that there's an appreciation there for that.
I can share my experience. When I came on to the council, I was very fired up, first reading this budget book about the golf fund. And council member Alshire can tell you that he kind of gave me that same conversation, a, a bit of perspective, right, of what that would mean to eliminate the golf course and the golf fund. And I for one would rather keep it. I also say that, I'll echo that exact sentiment, that I, I would go to take my son to try golf, right? He, we're, he's, we're, he's not a golfer, I'm not a golfer, right? And if we were to go to Black Rock, they'd run us off.
You're not gonna try golf at Black.
No, they're, they're gonna run us off, you know, we're holding up the.
You'd tee off after me that.
Tea time, folks or what have you, you know. Whereas I can go out there and Linda and the staff are great and, you know, we can have a good time and. You know, it, it's at that level where we can afford to do something like that, so.
Yeah, I agree.
And ironically, in the budget book, we do have fiscal year twenty-five, number of rounds estimated to be eighteen thousand. To go along with that, I will say, I, you know, I've been a big proponent of. It's a prime spot for redevelopment. I, I, I will say that all the improvement is good, we have, we ha-. I know, I know, I can. I'm not saying that that's my ultimate recommendation, but I always have to ask questions, right? But we've had others, we've had others come through, we've talked to outside consultants and they have all said the same thing. Even if we hired somebody else to manage that. We would still have to subsidize them, it's just not, the number of rounds, the.
Nine holes.
You're just not going to.
I don't, I don't think anybody's proposing that.
And I think places that have lost their nine-hole courses lament the loss of their nine-hole courses.
You can't get it back.
Because a lot of golfers don't have that four and a half to five hour timeframe, you know, unless you play at a golf and do it in two and a half, you know, every day, to, to, to devote to that.
Right.
And we lose the public amenity then.
Yeah.
It's a quality of life issue.
You do.
The, the other thing is the, the course doesn't have a, we, we don't have a manager there. We basically run it with full-time staff, then it's basically part-time staff that run it all the time. So actually, its cost should be higher if we, because in my mind, we should have a, somebody managing the course and we don't. We run this on the bare minimum staffing and the bare minimum people to maintain it. And they do a great job. But honestly, it should be, subsidy should be higher. As far as the stump removal, yeah, it's just one of many projects out there, but it's not a separate project per se, it's just an armband's cost. We'll try and take care of that as soon as we can, as best I can.
I stay in the middle, I don't know where I see him.
There you go.
Thank you.
All right, so we'll segue and turn to the stormwater protection fund and it is on section six on page thirty-two. I will say since the, at the time that we did our budget. We have been in. Review with our consultant to study the rates because when we did the rates and implemented this, it was for a three-year period. Fiscal year twenty-five would be that, the start of the fourth year. We, at this point, of course, we didn't come, we're not recommending any changes and. Actually, when Jim Bender, the engineer, is back in with our consultant, in the next couple of months, we'll be coming and presenting that and, and they agree. Leave it, leave the price as it is for fiscal year twenty-five and then if we are gearing things up and doing more stormwater. Type projects and restorations and, and all the things that we want to do with that, then in fiscal year twenty-six, twenty-seven, we may be looking at a slight increase in order to do that. But again, that's coming over the next couple of months. No increases, no changes in fiscal year twenty-five. So again, same layout, we have two years of information, fiscal year twenty-two and fiscal year twenty-three. Then we have fiscal year twenty-four, current year, both budgeted and estimated actual. Followed by fiscal year twenty-five proposed budget as, as well as four additional year projections. So in fiscal year twenty-five budget, operating revenue just shy of three point two million, operating expenses of one point two. Come halfway down the page or further down the page. We are looking to do approximately four point two million in capital infrastructure projects. So we would be using up prior cash accumulations of about one point two million. Brooke, do you want to cover one or two of the CIPs for the stormwater fund?
So we're gonna look at two, so if we move back to section, section seven, page. One seventy-one. First is the curb replacement program. This is the replacement of existing deteriorated, deteriorated curbs within the city. And as a reminder, when the stormwater fee was implemented, the, this used to be the responsibility of the property owner and then that converted to the responsibility of the city. So we have a hundred thousand dollars budgeted each year for that.
And again, that was really one of the selling points, right? Curves and sidewalks, if the city did both instead of the city doing half and the homeowners doing the other half.
Uh, the next is on page one seventy-four. The stormwater protection program implementation. So there are three projects slated for FY twenty-five totaling one million, one hundred thirty-five thousand. Uh, the first is at the ice rink for three hundred and fifteen thousand. One at North High for six hundred twenty thousand and Brighton Manor for two hundred thousand. This is the retrofit of existing flood control stormwater facilities.
One of the other things that I know. We're looking to do over the next few months as the summer progresses is get an RFP out to. When we first implemented this program, one of the things we're gonna do is take an inventory and start looking at all the storm drains and head some in across the city. And we had an opportunity with Columbia Gas came to us and offered to do some of that work free as they were doing their gas lines across the city. We thought that was great, so we took advantage of that. But the reality is we need to be a little bit more proactive. As they ran out of money or as they were done for their project year, we couldn't continue to be doing that. So that is definitely something that we're gonna be looking to get out for a bid and hire a contractor and bring that back. Later in the fall. But again, something else is part of the overall part of this so that we can be, I don't want to say more proactive, but, um, so we can take a better inventory of everything that's out there.
Do you have a quick question for you? This might be more of a Jim Bender question, but with the, the curb replacement program.
Yes.
I get questions about this, so I know like when we talk about the asphalt repair, you know, we have a methodology to determine the areas that are the most needed, right, to, to do that. How are we determining what, I get questions about this, what areas of town or which sidewalks are getting replaced?
So the curbs and sidewalks go hand in hand and it is definitely a Jim Bender question and he is going to be really upset when I don't do it justice. But. We had a contractor, we, we had a study done, we've looked at things and then they have their, I don't want to call them inspectors, but city staff and the engineering department. Goes and then they generate the listing of all the areas and the properties.
And that was done before the stormwater management program was done.
Yes.
They, they did that because then you would get a notice if your area was the next area to have, where you would be requested to do it.
Where the homeowner, oh, thank you.
Okay, so, so there's a master list somewhere and it used to be like, hey, you need to fix your curb, but now it's, hey, we're gonna fix your curb, is that?
It's, it's all part of the street overlay program.
Okay.
So the street overlay program is what drives this primarily. And so there's a, I don't know all the criteria, but obviously the, the vehicle usage, the age of the street, the condition of the street. And so there's a list of criteria that says, hey, out of these ten streets, this one will be this year or these five will be this year, these five will be the next year.
Okay.
And so it's an ongoing list that's been quite some time in the process. And so we know, let's say Avon's gonna be replaced in two years, we start sending notices out by, or engineering does by that point.
Okay.
And so before they used to send the notices to the homeowners.
Right.
Until the city took over. And so they also send out to all the utilities, whether it's, you know, water, sewer, gas, the whole thing, trying to get all that done before we ever hit that street. And so you try to hit all the utilities and all the, and then the curb and sidewalk and then you, and then you pave it. And then Columbia Gas comes later and cuts it.
Right.
That seems to happen a lot, unfortunately.
It's a way that it works.
There is a, there is a process, but it's really driven by the street overlay program is, I think, the primary portion of that.
And then there's still times where something may, unexpected may happen where a tree root may burst up through a sidewalk. Of course, those might not have been planned, but they would still come back around and fix those types of things as they happen and that we find and see them throughout the year.
Thank you.
Thank you, Eric. Go ahead, I'll take the, I'll take the question for later.
Now, somebody, uh, somebody indicated to me that there was a case, a legal case in Middletown, uh, in Frederick County recently. Where I guess the municipality went to. You know, enforce the sidewalk rule and I guess it was challenged and the municipality lost.
Oh, wow.
So I'm just curious if you had read that. Interesting case.
They were forcing the homeowner to replace the sidewalk or the city was replacing the sidewalk?
No, they were, apparently they were applying the role of the examiner's responsibility and the examiner challenged it.
Oh, wow.
Because now there's conversation among multiple municipalities over in Frederick County of what.
They're doing it on one.
Sidewalks, yeah.
So, and, yes, and until we implemented this program, we weren't able to do.
And we would get just as many complaints also for this, you know, for this thing.
And our commitment, our commitment.
Eric's back, sorry.
Our commitment when we move forward with this fund was that we would continue, so like the study that determined, you know, here's how many you have to do a year and here's about, approximately how much it's gonna cost. We committed that we were still going to continue at that level every single year. We wouldn't say, oh, now that the city's taking it over, we're gonna cut that amount that we're gonna do in half, no. So you will see a hundred thousand to slightly more in both the general fund side and in the stormwater fund side every single year for those two programs.
I was gonna say the code office says that the property are still responsible for the face of the curb for snow removal or if you, you know, sidewalk other maintenance, that sort of thing. It's like general maintenance, not replacement, and so the city took over the maintenance end of it.
Sure.
Several years ago. Thank you.
So more details, obviously, to come on that as the consultant comes in and Jim comes back, talk through those things. But just as a reminder, we charge a flat amount per one thousand square feet of improvised service and it's for everybody. And the city also is charged, just like any other nonprofit is charged, we pay for that. So I think I'm gonna stop there, but is there other questions before we leave the table or is your, we get to later in the evening when we're looking to adopt the budget this evening?
I have one question because we're rather covering water and sewer.
But in our motion later on, it indicates, let me get it out, get the right wording. It says. Yes. It says, I hereby move the introductory ordinance to increase the unit cost of water rates by fourteen percent in FY twenty-five, et cetera, et cetera, three percent. Which is reflective of our budget book, right? So.
Actually, no, at the time we, well, take it back, at the time we did the budget, we did not include, because they weren't far enough along in the cost study, they did not include fourteen percent. So what we did in March was we went ahead and put that in the out years in like twenty-six and twenty-seven. Because we weren't far enough ahead to get it keyed into fiscal year twenty-five.
But on this page, section six, page, what is it, page, uh, page nineteen, it says. Projected change fourteen slash three percent, right?
Right.
But when I look.
And that's, I'm sorry, so that's for the out years, it's for twenty-six, twenty-seven, twenty-eight, twenty-nine. And so what we did was we put the fourteen percent in twenty-six, twenty-seven, twenty-eight with three percent in twenty-nine.
So here's why I think I would prefer our motion refer to the table as included in the ordinance we're going to adopt rather than that. Because when I read this budget book and it says fourteen and three, I'm the average customer, I'm looking at the budget book and it says fourteen and three. It doesn't appear to differentiate or it seems to suggest that that's a comparative of the FY twenty-five projected revenue as compared to prior year. But clearly there is growth that occurs on the system, so I don't know how much of that is growth and how much of that is the actual percentage. Because if I were to look at that and say, they only increased it by fourteen percent as it says in the budget and that number went from, you know, nine point eight million to ten point three. That. I think incorrectly projects to the reader that that's an absolute growth figure, that's an absolute rate adjustment figure and not encompassing growth. Does that make sense? So I don't know whether that fourteen percent there, if I were to take the two numbers, is, let's say it's a heavily dollar jump, is four hundred thousand of that, the rate adjustment and a hundred thousand growth? Or is it all one, because then I think it kind of.
So again, at, at the point, if you look at that page, page nineteen for fiscal year twenty-five and what was keyed, if you go back to the prior page, page eighteen, you'll actually read what was keyed. if you go back to the prior page, page eighteen, you'll actually read what was keyed. Um, it was only a half of a percentage?
Yeah, it was much smaller.
And then the out years is the fourteen, fourteen, thirteen.
It's like point six percent or something. So that's why I said, for, for me, the reader, it's a little confusing to look at that little sort of like notation and then look at the reading part and then look at what we're adopting. I'd rather just refer to the table because those are the actual numbers that we're adopting.
So the motion sheet doesn't refer to the actual ordinance?
Well, not in the motion. It does, it's attached.
Yeah, the table's attached.
Yeah. But it's not in the motion.
The motion's pretty black and white. It just says fourteen percent.
And actually, it's, yeah, I, I also don't think that it's as accurate as it should be.
I, so, from the prior meeting, when the motion was tabled and amended and reread and voted.
Yeah.
Some of the items were not all included in the amended motion that was voted, which is why we're bringing this back as an introduction and changed it to the one year.
Yeah, that was an oversight, but I guess.
I'd rather just refer to the table. That's just me. I feel more comfortable conveying that to the customer than a percentage that may or may not apply, you know what I mean?
Right.
In such a, um, encompassing fashion to the customer.
The table is in the ordinance.
It is, yeah, and that's what I think I'd rather.
But it's not in the motion.
If I make it, I'd rather just refer to it in the motion and drop the percentages. That's okay.
It's your call. I mean, we put it this way because of kind of like.
Pr- past practice.
The uncertainty.
Right. And that's how we had introduced it, yeah.
So I'm looking at both the language for the tax rate and the water rate. Sewer rate, by the way, follows the same concept is something else I was saying. So basically, simple in the tax rate, which of course the tax rate's not changing, so it helps it be simple. It just says, you know, approval in an ordinance to establish the tax rates of.
Correct.
So same thing, approval in an ordinance to establish the water rates, uh, as per the table given here.
I would prefer that it not say as attached. I would prefer that it reference as noted in the ordinance.
Ordinance, I would.
Because it seems to me if you say as attached, then it becomes like a separate, like it disconnects it to me anyway.
Just, just from something that bond council has said to us in the past too, in the way that we write the motions versus what's in the ordinance.
So I guess Kristen volunteers to introduce that one.
Well, I don't, I don't, I don't think wastewater motion was brought back because it was read, it was, it was amended as it was read and voted on, so we didn't change it.
That's fine, that's fine. And then I, I missed it, I'm sorry.
So ideally, when it comes back next week, it would be exactly as it was worded, and at that time, we literally use the percentage.
And so our, wastewater is not significant, as significant of an issue, I think. So it could say, an ordinance to establish the water rates, as per the table in the ordinance.
But can we do those amendments when we get to the special session instead of like?
Now.
Oh, yeah, 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 sure.
Because I don't wanna get lost with where we are talking about budget now and then.
Yeah, I was just making the correlation between.
Right, I understand. Thank you, Michelle.
And while you're up there, if we could go back to the, to the, um, preliminary agenda and the Dolman, uh, question that you had. We received an MOU, uh, draft from the Dolman last week also.
Actually, it was from the Friends of the.
Friends of the Dolman, yes. All of this is the Friends of the Dolman Black Heritage Museum. And that MOU, um, included words that said that we, the city, would be responsible to directly pay the vendors, um, which we can't do in the amount of time, especially that we are be, you know, before the event. Because if we do that directly, then those vendors fall under our procurement policy. We need W nines, we need vendor applications. It becomes a, something that is not going to be accomplished between now and two and a half weeks.
Well, and the deposits for those had to be due June first. So if council doesn't vote until May twenty-eighth, May twenty-eighth.
Right.
But yes, getting, getting that together in two weeks and for city staff to know which.
Right.
Vendors.
Right.
Nobody's proposing that.
No.
Yeah, that was.
But, no, and that's what I'm saying. So that's why the, the, the motion says, uh, through a reimbursement process, which was also resistant from, uh, the Friends of the Dolman Black Heritage Museum as a method to do it. Which is why when we discussed it, uh, it was, it was thought that the best way to do this would be to go ahead and cut the Friends of Dolman Black Heritage Museum a check for the ten thousand five, knowing, or with the expectation and requirement that they provide us the receipts based upon their budget that they designated, how much of the ten five would go to different line items of their budget. And then when we meet with them in August to begin talking about the June, uh, the June twenty-twenty-five event, then we make sure it is clearly spelled out what the requirements are going to be to, uh, for them to, for us to be collaborative with them on this next event.
Right. So, so to be clear, the motion was written between, from the city of Hakers Town to pay the Dolman Black Heritage Museum, DBHM, because, um, to me, that was the group that appeared to do the presentation and to do the actual application for the event itself. And we just have to be careful because Friends of DBHM, I'm not, and they could, they could be a sep-, they could be a, a separate organization, but the group that I heard this council designated to give money for, for the event was to DBHM. So that was one, what we came back and did on the motion despite the MOU that we got from a different group.
I'm sorry. I, I guess I didn't realize this. Are you saying they're two different organizations?
I think you have a, I think you have an operational part of the organization, and then you have a fundraising arm of the organization, which I think are the Friends of the Dolman Black Heritage Museum.
But since we have no other paperwork for them, and we've never cut them checks, and we don't. We, we wanted to keep this as simple as possible. But it is a reimbursement, correct?
That's what the motion.
I'm in favor of a reimbursement person.
We left on a motion reimbursement basis.
And that is what we took from you all last week, which is why the motion is written that way. But that is not what we got from the Friends of the Dolman Black Heritage Museum.
I understand.
While the presentation happened, I heard application and I heard budget. So if there's additional things that we need to include in the motion.
Right.
Absolutely.
We can do that.
Just, we have the details by next week to bring that back.
Yeah, I've got it. I've, I've got that.
Thank you.
Thank you, ladies.
Thanks so much.
Thank you. Sorry for that.
Moving on. Follow-up discussion to the annexation A dash two thousand twenty-four dash O two, the I seventy right of way for Henry K. Douglas Drive Road. Kathy Marr and Joanna Wu for just Joanna.
And it just means mine too.
Let the boss do it.
Yeah. I see you back there, Kathy. I know you're back there.
Anyway, um, I'm presenting, um, for the follow-up discussion for the state properties annexation, a little bit of I seventy and a bit of Colonel Henry K. Douglas Drive. So this, um, annexation was presented back in Ja- in January. We had our public hearing on March twenty-sixth. And as, um, requested by this body, we moved the approval of the annexation to, um, after the effective date of, uh, fifty-five West Oak Ridge Drive. And so that annexation became effective last week on May seventeenth. So we're back here presenting this annexation. At the hearing, there was no one that spoke for or against, and the left, the record was left open for ten days for comments. Um, staff did not receive any comments during this time, and so we are here today having this discussion. And tomorrow, not tomorrow, next week. I don't want it tomorrow either. Um, this will be on the, your agenda for approval, um, on the twenty-eighth.
Anyone have any comments or questions? Lovely. Moving on. Follow-up discussion, annexation A dash two thousand twenty-three dash zero four, Heavens Heights Homes LLC. Joanna?
All right. Um, so this one also went to, we had a public hearing for this one, um, in April, so last month. And, um, a little bit about this property. It's located on the west side of Southern Boulevard in the north of East Oak Ridge Drive, and it'll be assigned Armad zoning. They're planning one single-family home and thirty-two family units. And at the hearing, um, we had, we heard some questions and comments from a representative of South Point HOA. And, um, we provided the response for her questions, and, um, her questions are attached to the back of this packet, but I'll go through it very briefly. Most of it were addressed, um, simply, uh, were not answered completely simply just because, um, a lot of their questions relate to, um, things that are addressed during the site plan approval and not an annexation, such as, um, like stormwater management, access points, utility extensions, and that's all addressed in the memo. And so those are what they had concerns about, and that was all emailed to them right after, um, we received their questions. But, um, this will also, yeah, this will also, um, be presented at your, for approval of a resolution at your May twenty-eighth meeting.
Questions or comments?
Um, just to confirm, the proposed zoning classification, um, two questions. Is all of the uses within the proposed zone are consistent with the county's current zoning, right? All the residential uses?
Yes.
So whatever residential uses that a developer would wanna propose for this property, whether it's inside of the city limits or outside of the city limits, is zoned to allow for the same exact types and densities of residential units now?
Yes, they are.
You're shaking your head.
Similar. Same use, yeah.
The density's marginally different. So.
The zoning's not substantially different as.
Okay. Um, and then could you just state again what the, what the annexa-, what the annexer is proposing to develop on the property?
They're proposing, um, thirty-two family units, I believe, um, geared towards fifty-five plus and older, that community.
Active with all communities?
Yes.
Under federal regulations?
That I'm not sure. And that'll all.
So active with all communities, fifty-five years and older, active with all communities are permitted with specific, as long as they follow specific federal guidelines?
It is whatever is consistent with that neighborhood, and that's what they're proposing.
All right.
And it'll be one single-family home so that they, the developer, uh, plans to reside there.
So just for my absolute clarity.
Okay.
Whatever an annexer is proposing, once they're annexed, the annexer can sell that property tomorrow, right? Will whoever buys the property, if that occurs, will they be subject to that limitation in which the annexer is proposing that they're going to do on the property? Or can they say, ah, you know, that was, that was John's thing, and John's gone. Now I own it, and I'd like to do something else?
All that's part of the annexation is Armad. They have just shown us what they would like to do, and we have let them know whether or not it complies with the city's zoning. But it's just Armad that's part of the annexation.
Man, I'm just thinking of like Howell Road, right, that was gonna be two hundred and thirty-five houses at one time of day, and now it's two huge warehouses. So I just don't wanna give folks this false impression that by annexing this property, we are somehow beholding the, the, the annexer to what they've said they're going to do. It could sit there for ten years and be something totally different ten years from now.
Well, in the Armad, we only allow single-family and two-family.
Right. But what I'm saying is, I don't want anyone out there to get the impression that we have said thirty-one is the number, and this is how they're going to do it, and that's the number of units. That, that's a concept that they proposed as a courtesy as part of this process.
They were trying to figure out what they could do with Armad.
Right. Okay.
And if they wanted to do anything else, like put in a warehouse, they would have to get a zoning change?
Yeah.
Right.
And it would be tiny.
But I mean, they could, they could come up with a different housing concept as well.
Yeah.
Without much.
It could be all singles.
All right, without much change.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, yeah, not that it's gonna be something completely different, just that the residential numbers we're telling people is just an idea. Okay.
Anything else? Thank you. Next item, ZT two thousand twenty-four dash zero one, industrial district bulk regulations.
State law.
Kathy Marr standing in for.
That's right, pitch hitting for Steve Bachmiller.
There you are.
Um, we have scheduled a public hearing for you next week to make some amendments to the industrial districts in the city zoning ordinance. It, it's specifically to warehouse parking, building height, and building setbacks in the industrial districts. And the amendments are intended to bring these standards up to date and consistent with current industrial development practices. I'll give you a little information. In urban areas with shrinking land for industrial development, and as warehousing distribution tends, is tending to go to more automated, buildings are tending to go higher, either because there's not as much land, particularly when you're in bigger cities, that you're finding taller warehouses because they don't have enough room to do a million square feet out. And, and also, some of them are becoming more automated, and they're looking for higher density, taller warehouse kind of, uh, areas. So what we're proposing here is to bring our code a little bit more up to modern standards because these heights that have been in our code have been in here for quite a while. We're recommending moving up the height in the IR district from sixty feet to a hundred feet, in the IG district, which is industrial general, from a hundred feet to a hundred and fifty feet, and in the IMU from a hundred feet to a hundred and fifty feet. And then also, since we are, um, increasing these heights, we're also suggesting for the IMU, where we, we have been seeing lately warehouses being built, that we increase the setback. Because right now, IMU, when we created it, we were anticipating it would be more office buildings, maybe some hotels or whatever. And so it had lesser setbacks than in the, um, IR and the IG. And so we're proposing to make the set, the front yard, rear yard, and set, and side yard setbacks the same in the IMU as they are for the IR and the IG. But if they're adjacent to residential, also to, um, have the, um, the increased setbacks. Like if you're adjacent to residential in the IR, then you have to be set back a hundred feet from the residential district. And in the IG, it's, uh, two hundred feet, and we're proposing a hundred and fifty feet if you're adjacent to residential in the IMU. And we're also suggesting, right now, that code just says, any building in the, in the industrial districts has to have that extra setback. We're suggesting it should only be for industrial or warehouse buildings because you can also build an office building in this district, and the commercial zones don't have that kind of extreme setback for commercial activity next to residential. So we're suggesting that those really big setbacks just between industrial buildings and the warehouse buildings. And then finally, again, with the more automated kind of warehousing, they don't need as much parking as the ones where you have, you know, hundreds of people running around in forklifts if you have more automated. And so we're recommending to modify it saying, if you are doing a custom-built facility, so far, people are building spec, so they have to go with the more generalized parking standard. But if it's custom-built and you plan to use large areas of fully automated, non-manned space, the parking requirement would be one space for one point, two employees on maximum working shift. For all other facilities for warehousing and wholesale, it would be the current two thousand square feet of gross floor area. It's one space per two thousand square feet of gross square area, and one space for two hundred square feet of net floor area of office and sales force space. This newer standard that we're proposing, they use in Reading, Pennsylvania. It was suggested to us as a reasonable way to deal with these custom-built warehouse facilities that have a lot of unmanned space. So that's what's proposed. Planning Commission had their hearing. We did not receive any comments. Their hearing was on April, um, twenty-fifth. And then most recent meeting, they recommended onto the council that this move forward, and the hearing is next week.
I have one question, one comment. First question is, when it says adjoining any R district, does that mean R district is just the residential districts? Or does that mean, uh, districts that, uh, allow for both residential and commercial?
Just R. So the Armad, Armid, R H, R O.
Okay. And then the sec- the second is a comment. Two thousand square feet, I don't know, it just seems, it just seems small. When you talk about they're going to automation, so a half million square foot building is two hundred and fifty parking spaces. Is that concur- that's the right word, concurrent?
The two thousand that we have, we did research up and down I eighty-one to see what people do. And so we, we, it used to be fifteen hundred, and we put it up to two thousand, so it was less.
I'm sorry, I didn't mean.
Count it twice, we.
Yeah, meaning it says, it says. Yeah, meaning it says, it says, uh, per the number of people on the largest shift. So let's say they're a half million square foot building, let's say they're a hundred employees, right? In that largest shift. Can, and let's say they have a million square foot building requires two hundred and fifty spaces. Is it just two fifty total, or is it two fifty?
Just.
Plus the hundred?
If it's one of these warehouses where they have large unmanned areas, you know, then it's, you would just use the, the shift number.
So it's one or it isn't, you don't make them do, okay, then I'm good.
For custom-built buildings.
Yeah, 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 okay.
Thank you.
Alright, thank you.
Next is the local conversion district and landmark overlay at one thirty-two Bethel Street, American Hall. Joanna Wu.
I'm back.
Good, okay.
Alright, so we had an application requesting a double overlay for the property at one thirty-two Bethel. It's the historic American Hall, and it's one of, um, it's a very important surviving building in the Jonathan Street community. And it looks like a house, not a house. And there are some news articles saying that the second floor was the old lodge hall for the African-American Lodge of the Grand United Order of Odd Fellows. And then their first floor was like a public space, and then their basement level was more for a, a school. And so the applicant is proposing to have that restored, have the fraternal lodge in the, um, their second floor, and the first floor be a museum, and this basement area be for support areas. This property would be a double overlay, so it'd have a local conversion district overlay and a landmark overlay, and, which is the first in the city, I learned. So the applicant has listed seven permitted uses. So the first, the first four are what they're really looking to do. So the civic and social organizations, community centers, museum, and administrative support services. And five through seven are more for, um, if this does not pan out and changes are to be made, it's built into this, um, this application. So part of the landmark overlay process, they had to go through HDC review. So the Historic District Commission reviewed the materials and recommended the landmark designation. And attached in this packet is their letter of recommendation to the Planning Commission. And then the Planning Commission reviewed the request and recommended to you guys, to this body, the request for the double overlay. And a hearing is also scheduled for the next regular meeting next week on May twenty-eighth.
Can I ask an informational question?
Sure.
So this project went to the HDC, right?
Yes.
What if the HDC said, nah, we don't think it's historic?
Then it probably would not have a landmark overlay in their application process.
Would it still go onto the Planning Commission?
For the local conversion district overlay, yes. Because it's a landmark, they want a landmark designation, that's why it goes to HDC.
Okay.
Can I ask a question follow-up to that?
Okay.
So let's say for whatever reason, these two overlays are applied. And I'm thinking of the, um, the property out across the North High. I don't remember.
The house on Pennsylvania.
Yeah.
Stone House.
So let's say that, or, 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 um, what was the one?
Wells House.
Yes. No, the one that we owned for a while.
Wells.
Almertown.
Almertown, Wells House.
Once these two overlays are applied.
Sorry.
What is the provision for reversing course if, let's say, none of it ends up working out?
Well, for this one, if none of this museum, fraternal lodge, all that historic repair doesn't pan out, they have those permitted uses that they've listed out. So in this case, this, they've listed out artist studios, offices, and a photography studio. So that can be transformed into that instead of a museum, lodge, and support service.
So you get unhistoric designated, I don't think.
I guess what I'm asking is, once this is applied, and let's say somebody comes along fifteen years from now and says, you know what? The building is of such a condition that whatever plan we had didn't pan out, the building is of an, uh, you know, of an unstable nature, and we wanna remove the building and put another building there that looks just like it.
They got a huge grant from the state to preserve the building, to put this use in.
That's what I kinda wanna know, is if they've already headed down that road and understand that there's no.
No going back.
And if HDC did not designate that as a landmark.
Their role is to make a recommendation to the Planning Commission. There's criteria in the HDC's part of the zoning ordinance, and they, and let's face it, they would never say no. But anyway, there's a list of criteria, and they say, yes, we feel that they, the applicant has put forward what they say is historic about it. They say, yes, that does comply with the criteria in the zoning ordinance. And then they make a recommendation to Planning Commission for the process to start.
And then it comes to us.
Yes.
As the final, okay. Thank you. Anything else? Okay. Last but not least, local conversion district overlay four oh one Center Street. Joanna Wu.
Awesome, alright, so this one's just one overlay. This one's just a local conversion district overlay for four oh one Center. It is located in the R Med zoning district, so the, um, the applicant is proposing a couple uses for this. Just because they have, they don't have a tenant yet trying to do that. So they're trying to make a big, a wide range, so they have offices, business and professional, catering kitchen, restaurant, dry cleaning and laundry services, hair and nail and skin stores, and retail and wholesale trade as their permitted uses in the local conversion district overlay. The Planning Commission also reviewed this at their April tenth meeting and recommended it to this body. And a hearing will be held at May twenty-eighth. So similar to the one at American Hall, but no landmark, just local conversion district.
So it's my understanding that this property, um, previously had, um, or maybe prior to zoning, Kathy might have slipped me on wrong, had the ability to do these things. And then because of a extended period of vacancy, lost that right. Is that correct?
Uh, so currently, I, I believe it's been a store in the past.
It was a food.
Something like that.
It was a, you know, food store, a small restaurant.
But it is currently a non-conforming.
Because it sat empty.
Because it's in the, a residential use, in its, yeah.
I mean, I forget how long it was, but, yeah.
I believe before nineteen seventy-seven is.
But I, I can't remember how long it's been vacant, but it's been vacant for a while. Okay, so this will restore all of these options?
Yes. Not restore, but it'll allow them to.
Or put in place. For them, it's a good restoration, but.
Because it's located in a very residential area, but this building also has never been a residential building.
Which is why I brought this up, because, um, in general, personally, I feel like, uh, it's, while it's important to protect the residential flavor of a residential area, I feel it's just as important to allow for especially smaller shops. In this case, it's, it's kind of, the anticipation, I think, is for food service, but it could be other retail. And I'm, I'm concerned that, and maybe it's just because I don't understand it enough, and I'm certainly willing to learn more about it. But I think this is a good thing, because I think this brings something to the neighborhood that the neighborhood needs. But I think we have a lot of neighborhoods that don't have the opportunity to, to do this unless we go around doing individual overlays for properties. And so while I applaud this effort by these owners to get this done for that community, even though they're in New York, the, um, I think, I think the reality is, I'd like to see this as an option without having to go through all of these hoops in a lot of neighborhoods in our, in our city. So, does that make sense?
That's called Houston, Texas. That's called not having zoning at all. We created this tool because before, if you, if you're non-conforming use expired, too bad, too sad, there was no tool. We created this completely from scratch in Hagerstown. It's a unique tool, because we knew in our neighborhoods, we had a lot of these little buildings that were either built as mixed use or built as commercial, and they're residentially zoned, because they were built before we had zoning. And so this is a way to allow the commercial to come back, but it also allows for a public process, because what if there's something about the property where it would be too much of a negative impact on the community if it activated as commercial? So this allows for two hearings. Anybody who has a concern, they have a chance to come forward, mayor and council can consider all of those comments, and they, well, yes, yes or no. And it's, we, we wanted it to be, we were hoping it could be like a board of zoning appeals thing, but we were told by the city attorney that no, because it would never pass that kind of test. We created this overlay.
Sure, so oversight, and, and is, is certainly appropriate. But I'm concerned that, again, the level of steps that have to be taken, and maybe that's not a fair way to say it, but it's all I can think of at the moment, causes business owners to just move, move on. And, you know, I think about driving down through any residential neighborhood in Baltimore City. Bell's Point, um, and, you know, I'm trying to think of the one to the north. On every corner of every block, there's something. There's a tavern, there's a sandwich shop, um, there's a florist, there's something. It's all integrated. So to me, it's a, that's, that's kind of my thought about a bigger picture issue. I, I'm not suggesting that we should not have zoning, or, or anything like that.
And we have a couple of zoning districts where, if you have an area where you have quite a bit of the commercial mixed with residential, we have zonings, which is the commercial, local, and the neighborhood mixed use, where you, those things are just allowed. It's just for these guys where it's, you know, a hundred houses and one commercial property. We created this, this overlay process.
I mean, to me, it's an issue of what I'll refer to as generational wealth building. It's, it's, it's providing someone in the community to start and create and build a business, and then their, their children take over the business, and then their children take over the business, and it creates that opportunity. And sometimes it just has to be just that little spark of an opportunity to make that happen, so. But thank you for the explanation.
Anything else?
No, ma'am.
Thank you.
Awesome.
Thank you. That's cause, look, I'm doing, I'm, you just wait.
Oh, okay.
You just wait. Nope, nope, nope. Back to me. Uh, I need a, yeah, thank you. I need, uh, can I get a vote to go into special session, please?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Are we gonna take a moment to talk about this language, or do we wanna take a break and talk about this language? Or how are we gonna do that? For the second, third?
Well, we're gonna go, and we're gonna do the first ordinance, and I would expect us to talk about it whenever we talk in discussion.
Okay, thank you. Oh, I'm sorry. Do we need to do this before we go into special session?
No.
Oh, comments, okay, sorry.
It's okay. An approval of an ordinance, tax rates beginning July first, two thousand twenty-four.
Madam Acting Chair, um, I hereby move for the approval of an ordinance on May twenty-first, two thousand twenty-four, to establish the city's tax rate for the fiscal year July first, two thousand twenty-four, through June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-five, on the basis of one dollar point zero zero two cents per one hundred dollars of assessed value of all real property, and two dollars point zero, uh, point five zero five cents, uh, per one hundred dollars of assessed value for, of all business personal property within the city of Hagerstown.
Second.
Did I say the dollar amounts appropriately? Okay. My discussion is, um, to the folks listening, that this, this means no increase in the tax rates.
Anything else? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Approval of an ordinance budget FY two thousand twenty-four, twenty-five.
Madam Acting Chair, I hereby move for the approval of an ordinance, May twenty-first, two thousand and twenty-four, to adopt the city's budget for fiscal year July first, two thousand and twenty-four, through June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-five, in the total amount of two hundred and nine million, seven hundred and seven thousand, nine hundred and twenty-three dollars.
Second.
Discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Introduction of an ordinance, water rates FY twenty-five. Do you want to read this?
Yeah.
As is?
Please be, I'll read.
Thank you.
I gotta read. I can read your writing.
Oh, okay. I, I don't know, who, who should check this?
Go ahead and read it, and then we'll amend it as it, after it's seconded.
So this is not what's on the blue paper? Uh, I hereby move for the introduction of an ordinance to establish the unit cost of water rates and water benefit fees and fire line fees for all customers as per the detailed individual rate and fee changes in the volume charges and fixed charges by meter size as indicated in the body of the ordinance, semicolon, effective for all bills rendered on or after July first, two thousand twenty-four, period. These rates and fees are necessary to meet the revenue requirements of the water fund in order to keep the fund self-supporting as determined by the two thousand twenty-four cost of service study prepared by Nugent Strategies and Solutions LLC, a recognized expert in water rate analysis, period.
Second.
Discussion?
I'll just note that, um, while I'm in favor of this increase, I was in favor of seeing this for the proposed three years. That way, we meet the obligation of the outstanding CIPs. So I feel like we're leaving this a bit at the mercy of subsequent administrations, but I am in favor of this.
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries.
We're gonna need.
Yeah, can you pass that up? That, that was great. That was good job, good job.
Right.
Okay, thank you. Introduction of an ordinance, city of Hagerstown, general obligation debt.
Madam Acting Chair, I hereby move for the introduction of an ordinance authorizing city of Hagerstown to sell and issue from time to time upon its full faith and credit in one or more series, one A, general obligation bonds, and B, general obligation bond anticipation notes, B A N Ss, each in an original aggregate principal amount not to exceed fifteen million, nine hundred and fifty thousand dollars, and two, general obligation refunding bonds in an original aggregate principal amount not to exceed one hundred and thirty percent of the aggregate principal amount of any bonds being refunded. Proceeds of any such issued bonds, B A Ns, or refunding bonds will be used to finance, reimburse, or refinance costs as defined by the ordinance with respect to a project generally referred to as General Fund-Hagerstown Fieldhouse, the project. Any series of such general obligation bonds, B A Ns, or refunding bonds may be issued as a single obligation in drawdown form and/or as an installment obligation. The ordinance provides that before issuance of any such authorized general obligation bonds, B A Ns, or refunding bonds, the council must determine or provide for details of the issue by resolution. Staff is hereby directed to work with the city's financial advisor and bond counsel to complete the process for sale of the authorized bonds in conjunction with bonds authorized by ordinance number. by ordinance number O-23-05 and to develop the necessary detailed resolution and other documents relating to the bonds.
Second.
Discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
It's almost like an Orioles chant. We all said oh at the same time.
That was nice. Yeah.
Was it zero or no?
Yeah.
It hesitated for a moment.
City Administrator has a list of stuff here.
A list of stuff. First off, Monday is Memorial Day, so all city offices will be closed. Secondly, the Decades Music Series continues in the University Plaza on Friday night, 6 to 8, a '70s night. For those of you who are old enough to know music in the '70s, Shelly?
Hey.
Yeah, we're looking at you guys.
I'm young.
Looking at me, looking at you.
I do know.
Gravolicious is the band. They are awesome.
It was good music.
They are, they are one of the best '70s bands I've seen. So that's Friday night, 6 to 8. Let's see. Next up, I want to thank staff for an incident, major incident, I think pretty much minor incident for a week of the first full attendance at the baseball stadium. We, the crowds averaged about 25, 2600 a night. And a big shout out to all those downtown ambassadors who volunteered and helped guide people through downtown and to the various restaurants in the AD District and around the stadium. They, I heard many people talk about how much help those folks were. And I can pretty much tell you of that total attendance for last week, there were a significant, I think, majority of people that had never experienced downtown Hagerstown yet. I know Brittany spoke with far more people that had attended the events that were first time to Hagerstown. So I think that's a great, great thing to have happening for the downtown. Potterfield Pool opens on May 25th, Saturday, for the season. As we said, the golf course reopened on Monday. The second and ninth holes were shortened, thankfully. All else remains as before and like you said, of course, in amazing shape for the rest of the year to play. And lastly, DCED has a program called Spring Sprouts. It's a max of $750 that any of our local businesses can apply for that can go to a full range of use within our business, storefront displays, marketing materials, if they need any software upgrades, anything like that. I implore any of the downtown businesses or city businesses that can utilize $750 to contact DCED. Chris Simmerling is the guy to talk to and get your 750 bucks in and help defray some of the costs that you may need to improve the situation.
I think the application deadline is quickly approaching, too. Correct?
Friday.
Friday. Yeah.
So please, please do that.
Thank you. Councilmember Schindler?
Couple things. Again, I wanted to congratulate Meredith Park on their grand opening to the public. It was nice to see so many feet on the street downtown. Very encouraging. Again, today was the ribbon cutting for the new bookmobile down at the library today and Councilmember Parini was there as well, as well as Mayor Martinez. And I am always remiss, I always love to tell people that Washington County Library right here, we had the very first bookmobile. So anybody that didn't, who knew that, hasn't heard that ad nauseam, there's your fact for the day. And I just wanted to say there was a really nice Police Week service last week at St. John's Episcopal Church. I was honored to attend and it was a great way to honor all of our fallen officers and judicial members and, you know, it was a beautiful service. So, thank you.
Councilmember Parini?
I'll probably speak about most of the things that I was able to do in the last couple of weeks to next week, but I do want to chime in on the city administrators' comment about the opening day and councilman's opening day. My understanding is the attendance was 3,773 and it's also my understanding the capacity is 4,000. So that was, that was huge, I think. I also attended, and I'll explain why I'm mentioning this, the ribbon cutting at Wholesome Cement for their new alternative fuel source system. Their new alternative fuel source is trash and specifically recyclable, you know, the type of trash that we kind of think of as recyclable trash. And they use that to create, you know, the heat to create the clinker, which then ultimately creates the cement. And it occurs to me that as we've had some discussions about the city's, you know, waste program, trash collection program, that there may be some synergies between the city of Hagerstown and, and a corporate, effectively corporate neighbor right on the other side of the city line, Wholesome Cement, in finding if there are ways to, to partner or work with them if it means that we can indeed lower our ultimate cost for the programs that just keep, tend to keep getting more and more expensive. So I just wanted to mention that. Maybe we can have a conversation about that at some future work session and, but between now and then, maybe we can gather some more information about what they have, what they're doing and so forth. So I was really impressed with their, with their technology. Thank you.
Councilmember Ralshire?
I have a little thing.
Wonderful. So in front of you or at the beginning of this session was a request for letter of support for Hub City Vinyl's application to apply for the Senator George Edwards Fund to assist with their future development and expansion. So looking for a nod of the head to proceed with this letter.
Will do.
Yep.
Can I have one, one more thing? I'm sorry.
Yes.
Keep me in good grace with the family. I just wanted to send a congratulations out to the former South Hagerstown High Athletic Director and current Smithsburg High School Athletic Director who happens to be my son-in-law, Ryan Myers. He was awarded today the Maryland State Athletic Director of the Year Award and that's why you had some minions in here of my family wreaking havoc. I'm afraid to go back to my office. But I just want to give a shout out to him and the great work he's done at Smithsburg and the great work he did at South High after Mike Tesla left there. So just thank you for that.
Guys, what is going on?
I, I just want to say I did, I did go over to the museum with the family the other evening where they had all the high school artwork on display. If you didn't get out there and didn't get a chance to see it, it was pretty awesome. My daughter's probably going to kill me when I say this publicly, but whoever the young student was at Bispa that made, there was this, it was like a monkey shaped mug, you know, like drinking out of or something. Anyway, it looked like it was literally like 3,000 years old and it was the coolest piece over there. So whoever made that student out there, congratulations.
Oh, because you're saying she, her.
Yeah, she had a really awesome dress there, but like, it just, everything was like, it was cool. And then whatever kids that made the whole table that looked like a pizza party. That was cool. Was awesome. So just shout out to those kids because it was really good work and it's unfortunate you just could see that really small bit.
It just goes to show that that Bakers Mark, you know, the first presentation of the day, you know, was just, it's just so important for our arts and entertainment district, so.
Absolutely.
That is all. I would like everyone to note that I am finishing before this meeting was scheduled to adjourn. So we are adjourned.